Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Morgan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just have a few announcements before we get into our very robust agenda this evening. First off, the Clothing Center Committee will meet on Friday, January 10th at 10:00 a.m. in Summer Place Boardroom. And also, the next Policy Review Meeting will be held on Friday, January 24th at 10:00 a.m. in the Summer Place Boardroom. Are there any requested changes to this meeting agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, second by Ms. Christie. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Dr. Ryswick, start with your report.
All right, let's do that. Put everybody to sleep to start out. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're just saying, everything feels long tonight.
It does feel very long, yes.
Including my report. So, just want to welcome everybody back from winter break. I hope everyone was able to enjoy some time away with their family and friends and recharging. I hope that everybody's excited as I am to kick off this new semester. It's always a neat time of year when you kind of think and reflect a little bit about what happened last semester, but then can think about all the things there are to do to get back to do. And I'm real excited about the momentum we have right now. So, I'll start this report off with a fun update. This past Saturday, I had the honor of dropping the puck at the Ice Bears game. I was thankful to the Partners in Education and the Knoxville Ice Bears for hosting us. It was a fantastic event. Nearly $11,000 was raised that evening with all proceeds benefiting KCS. So, I want to thank everybody for coming out for that. That really is, it was sold out, really has become, and they coupled it with Star Wars Night. So, I know some of you guys were able to be there and we might have been on the fan bony for a little while getting to ride that too on the ice, which is always a neat experience. But the Ice Bears have been great and Partners did it as well. I'm also pleased to share with you that you will receive a copy of the 2324 Annual Report on Thursday. This report reviews the progress that we've made last year and provides insight into the intentional strategies our schools are using to improve student outcomes. The annual report will also be available for download on our website this Thursday. Really excited about that. This is the second one we've done ever. But I've gotten to see a good draft of it and it looks really good. So, we haven't always taken the time to report on these results extensively. And I want to thank our Strategy Division who's worked extremely hard trying to increase transparency and improving communication of our district. So, a big shout out to those three departments that really headed that. Our Creative Services Department led by Abby Harris, our Public Affairs led by Ms. Carly Harrington, and our Impact and Analytics that is Steve Rutter. He manages that for us. So, it really, really has been a work that they've been working on all semester. But I do think even last year, we got a lot of positive impact just from CEOs, from commission, from different people, just the fact they could kind of see the whole story there of the work that's been done by our teachers and principals in schools. So, excited about that. As we begin the new year, it's important that we take time to look ahead. Tonight, I'd like to share the preview of a few major initiatives that are on the horizon for Knox County Schools. In just a few minutes, you get the opportunity here from Dr. Brown on our update on our continuous improvement work in special education. Just for folks to remember, a little over two years ago, we launched a deep dive into our special education services and supports to identify opportunities to enhance our work and commitment to success for every student. You know, I think at that time, it was, people were saying, what are we doing? We knew we wanted to be better. And so, that was something that we asked for. There was no political pressure to do that. It was just something that we want to always have that continuous improvement mindset and really moved into that work. And excited to hear that today. So, as you know, we've secured a third-party contractor to produce a three-to-five-year strategic plan. At the end of this, that's what we're looking to do. And while we look forward to the results of that study, I also want to commend Dr. Brown and his team for not waiting for that study to be finished before we start implementing change now. His team is currently taking meaningful steps to enhance, as you'll hear in a minute, the IP experience for families and focused decision-making as close to the student as possible. Dr. Brown and his team have been in schools performing fidelity checks and working with our regional leaders to ensure schools, teachers, and administrators have the supports they need to provide high-quality education for our students. I want to say this, you know, when you take these things on, they're not easy. And trying to make sure that we're doing these things right, sometimes it is two steps forwards and three steps back. And there's a lot of people who are impacted by these things. But just because the work's hard is not a reason for us not to do it. So, I appreciate the board being on this journey with us. I think we're, we'll celebrate some victories today. We'll also point out some areas that we need to get better at and that our students deserve that. So, our work is far from finished, but I'm confident we're on the right track. And under Dr. Brown's leadership, I'm confident we'll not only celebrate our successes, but embrace with courage the changes that need to be made to help our students succeed. Couple other things just to tell you that are coming up. In the spirit of continuous improvement, I've tasked the Academics Division, Dr. Wilson's team, to contract with a third-party vendor to evaluate our middle school programs and practices. If you look at our data over the years, and this is not a reflection on our middle school teachers or our middle school principals, but it's been inconsistent. We'll have, we'll have like steep increases and then steep dives over time. What we want to do is try to level that out. And so, part of that, we want to, we want to take a deep look and have a third-party come look at what are national best practices for middle schools. We started that, if you remember, at the end of November with Dr. Faulkner, who was on assignment for us to interview our current sitting middle school principals and get some feedback from them about areas we might be able to improve. You've probably heard me say before, is middle school an extension of elementary school? Or is it pre-high school? And our answer right now is yes. And we need to be able to define that a little better. We've done a pretty good job in elementary defining foundational skills and a good job about the career exploration for our high schools. But middle school is the place we want to continue to do that. So, looking forward to that. Last month, I was also encouraged to hear feedback, as you all did as well, from our stakeholders on the development of our district's next five-year strategic plan. I think three strengths that the Milan-Chicago group identified from their surveys, focus, the focus groups were culture, communication, and understanding of our four priorities. As I went back and looked over those, if I were going to say, what are three things that I would hope that they would find? Those were probably three things that are really important for what we need to do moving ahead. So, I've been with the district for a long time and we usually don't talk about these strengths. So, I was pleased to hear that our community is already feeling the impact of our improvements in these areas, especially around communication. That feels like one, transparency and communication. We can, we never stopped working on that. But it was good to know that they noted that that was something they felt like they understood. So, we'll continue to build on that. As you know, this is also the point of the year when we begin to plan for next year's budget. Our divisions and our divisional leaders have already begun evaluating their needs and expenditures to ensure that we're maximizing every dollar and prioritizing student impact. Last year, we were able to make historic investments in our people. And I want to thank our board again for you making that investment last year. Just as a reminder to the public, 86% of our budget, it's a big budget, but 86% of our budget goes to staffing. And while this is a major investment, it illustrates the critical and important role our staff plays. our staff play in improving outcomes for students. And I want you to know on the record in January, my commitment as superintendent this year will be to put us in a position to continue to invest in our people year after year. I think you guys were part of the Evergreen Study, and you know, we got in that hole because we weren't able to do that. And market value, we're there now, and that's going to take continuous investment as we move forward to do that. But also understand, 86% of our budget's in there, so that's our commitment moving forward. We'll continue to update you on that progress of where we are in the budget as we move forward. And in closing, before I wrap up, I'd also like to take a moment to celebrate a significant milestone for many of our educators. This year, 240 KCS teachers have earned tenure, making a pivotal achievement in their careers and a testament to their dedication to our students. I think it's real important to know, tenure is not just a mild recommendation that happens by chance. It's a reflection of the excellence, resilience, and unwavering commitment to education. When we talk about great educators in every school, this is what we're talking about. And to see these 240 achieve at that level, that means they've been having an impact on students, and their students are moving forward, and these are the exact kind of folks that we want to stick around and really celebrate. So, they exemplify the very best of what it means to serve in a classroom and shape our students. So, I want to say congratulations to these educators for their hard work and this well-deserved accomplishment, and thank you for the opportunity on the long updates today. That's all I have.
I meant to time that, but I forgot to. But it was all good stuff, so, all very meaningful work that is being done. Thank you, Dr. Ryswick, for that report. Next on the docket, we have Ms. Himmelgarn, our Internal School Funds Audit Report.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Our Internal School Funds Audit Report is part of an annual review of financial activity at the school level. Mr. Ted Hoats from Pew CPAs is here to highlight the findings. As he'll share, we were pleased to see a reduction in findings in some areas, but you'll also see that we've still got some work to do. And as you follow along in the report, some of the steps that we have taken or are taking to get there are highlighted in our management responses. So, I will turn it over to Mr. Hoats.
Thank you.
It's good to see you again.
Thank you. Good to be here again. Good to be here for a start of new year. Obviously, our report is a really long report. You have the attachment. It's 413 pages now. There will be a corrective action plan added to it, which is really an extension of the management responses that were discussed, so it'll be even a few more pages longer than this. Obviously, I'm not going to go over all the pages, but I'm going to go over summary numbers and the findings section. For reference, say, on PDF pages two through four are your table of contents. The only reason I point that out is if you're interested in the balance sheet, income statement, and transfer schedules for an individual school, that's where you would go look. So, particularly, that's where we identify the balance sheet and income statement for each school, and later in the transfer section, you'd have to go through, find it in order, but they're in alphabetical order. Elementary school is first, middle school is then, then high schools. So, if you're looking for information on a particular score, for certain particular schools, you can go to the page number in that, use the table of contents to find it. Right after the table of contents, on PDF pages seven through nine will be the audit opinion. And basically, in the opinion section, if you read the opinions, it looks a little odd because we are reporting under the state manual, Tennessee State Manual for Internal School Funds, so it has a different basis than GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. So, our report will show adverse opinion on U.S. GAAP, but an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting or the state guidelines that we're required to use. So, that is, don't be misled by that. We are, the report is exactly as it's supposed to be. It's a clean opinion under the state, under the state manual that we're required to follow. So, don't be alarmed by the adverse opinion section there. It's your regular report for any school system in the state of Tennessee. Beyond that, immediately after that are the summary numbers, which on pages 11 through 15. And here, the first two pages, 11 and 12, will show summary numbers for your balance sheets. Of note, on page 12, and it's small print, you won't be able to see it there, but if you're also looking on your screen, total cash held in the internal school funds, and I'll take a step back for a minute. This audit's on the internal school funds, so it's for the checking accounts, basically, or the activities that are at the individual schools. It does not include central office activity. The only, there is a central office account, but it's an account which is tied in with the internal school funds. So, this is really only the internal school funds activity as opposed to central office activity. But even in these, the 90-plus schools, total cash at the end of the year was 16.8 million. So, it's a lot, a lot of money is held in these accounts. Also, from a, on page 14 at the bottom, you'll see total revenues and expenditures. Total revenues were 25.2 million for the year. Total expenses are 23.4 million. So, even though there are a lot of small transactions, because primarily, there are small transactions in these accounts, there's an awful lot of small transactions, and the dollars are significant. So, that's why the state requires this audit, and that's why it's important to have controls because while many transactions are smaller in nature, they can't, certainly significant dollars are involved in these accounts. After that follows the, and I'm not going to go through these, like, the individual balance sheet and income statement for each school, I'm going to skip all the way to the back and the compliance section, which is on pages, first, your compliance report is on pages 396 and 397. And this is the regular report on compliance, two pages. All it really does is refer to the findings that are, that follow in the next pages. Findings are predominantly internal control findings or differences or exceptions to the state manual, the guidelines for internal school funds. We have 12 findings listed here. There were 12 findings a year ago. As Ms. Himmelgarn noted, that we do have a decrease in total number of exceptions. In fact, we had, let me get my summary sheet here, sorry. From the prior year of the 12 findings in the prior year, two of them were resolved. Six of the 12 had fewer instances, so eight either are fewer or gone away. Two were about the same, and two, we had more instances. So, from a exception standpoint, there has been improvement. As auditor, I want to continue to see improvement and continue to see a lesser number of instances, but at least positive that number of exceptions has gone down. And if you look at the individual findings, and they do start on page, two more pages later, page 400, yes, you'll see, okay, I guess it was 39, that's fine. That's a good example, though. You'll see that each section has, too many pages here. Each section has a criteria or specific requirement, a condition, a cause and effect, a recommendation, and then a management response. The first four of those were written up by us, the audit firm, and the management response, and later the corrective action plan, which will mirror the management response, is the school's response to the finding and really what their plan is for the coming year to correct or improve that finding. The findings, just quickly to run down what they, what they are, were segregation of duties, which is difficult in, particularly in an elementary school where you have a very small office, negative fund balances, dispersment exceptions, purchase order receipts exceptions. And I'm really following the prior year finding summary on page 412 here. These are the ones in the prior year, and the column to the right will show whether they're repeated and which reference they are this year or whether they're corrected. Ticket reconciliation, fundraising, resale activities, school support organizations, approval of transfers, travel policy. The second to last one listed and third to last one listed were two that were resolved this year. We did not have exceptions for, so they were cleared. And then two new ones in this year's report, number 11, which would be on, up a few pages, but let's see, yeah, one more. Deals with unauthorized credit card charges, an external issue, and then number, the 12th one is supplemental salary payments. So, those are the two new ones. Again, in summary, there has been improvement. We want to continue to see improvement in the number of exceptions, but, you know, it's a step in the right direction. And we certainly, we get very good cooperation from the internal school funds team, from Garrett Raiden, Heidi Murray, and their team, and get communication from Ron McPherson and Jennifer Himmelgarn as well. So, we appreciate their support, very open and insisting in the process. Do we have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? No?
I will add, I realize, you know, you don't know how long you've, I think the report was released about a week ago, but also it's over the holidays, and so you may not have much time to look at them. If there's something you have a question on later, you certainly can either reach me directly at my firm, Pew CPAs, or can go through Jennifer, or Ron, or Garrett, or someone on staff to ask, and then they can get in touch with me as well.
Yeah, they're very accessible with what they do and how they work with us, which we appreciate. Awesome. Thank you so much for being here and presenting that to us tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
All right, next up, Steve, Mr. Triplett, legislative update.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all, board, for responding to Ms. Cote's email about figuring out a time to meet with our state legislators before session starts. The date, I know we tried to accommodate lots of schedules, obviously legislators and our own, our own crew here, and so we landed on Wednesday, January 22nd at 9:00 a.m. So, if you want to plug that into your calendar, Ms. Cote will send out an invitation shortly with some details and all of that, but that date, January 22nd at 9:00 a.m., we'll meet with our legislators and discuss, you know, the upcoming session and things we'd like to see. We will discuss our legislative priorities when we get to the regular agenda for Thursday, and that'll be kind of the catalyst for our discussion with them on the 22nd. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Awesome, thank you.
How long are we expecting that to last?
The breakfast?
Yes.
Yeah, it's like an hour and a half. Ms. Christie, do you have a strategic plan committee update? That's a mouthful.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, Milan-Chicago provided us with their final report on stakeholder engagement surveys and also wrapped up their collaboration with Accenture regarding the student, family, staff, and community input. Accenture is still in the early stages of their work toward drafting a plan for committee review, and will be meeting with staff to review data next week. We will be meeting again, the committee, in the near future. We do not have a date for that yet, but as soon as that's been finalized, we will, of course, share it with board members in the public.
Awesome. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? All right, Dr. Brown?
Oh, and board members, the presentation is attached to the agenda, so you can follow along. You don't have to squint up at the TVs.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As always, I do appreciate the opportunity to come and share with you all. I know that you receive information from lots of different places and articles and emails and all kinds of things. I do appreciate the opportunity to get to come and talk to you and share with you the work that we're doing. I got to turn this on, don't I? All right, there we go. We're going to kind of stick to the same framework we did last time and really focusing on three major areas. As we reflected on this, I know some of the, Ms. Henderson, you mentioned in the last meeting, you know, wanting a real update about some of the things that have been done. And so, I'm going to go back and go through some historical things that we've accomplished and also look at some of the results that we're already seeing. But as I reflected on that, what I, I think where we are is we're doing some small things along the way that probably are unseen. The big work of this year is more of a long-term goal of creating, doing that analysis and creating the three-to-five-year strategic plan. So, I want to go back and kind of highlight some of the things that we have done in this update on the, in these three areas. So, this is a lot, going back, talking about staff development. You know, obviously, the first thing that we did and that came out of the resolution you all passed in the fall of '23 was to develop a KCS Way for Special Education. And again, this was just a framework that we provided to all schools. And one of the things that we know is when you have 91 schools, there's 91 different ways to do things, and we wanted to make sure that we provided some consistent direction and advice on how to operate and make decisions, as Dr. Ryswick mentioned earlier, closest to the student. So, part of the work we've been doing this year is to go back and see, are we doing it? And so, in the first quarter, our regional support structure and our supervisors randomly visited schools, dropped in on IEP meetings to see. And at that time, about 80% of the schools that they visited, and that includes all five regions, were following and doing the things. They were having agendas, they were, they were meeting the direction of that, but 20% worked. And so, with that came corrective action plans, and so our supervisors then follow up with that school leadership to make sure that they are using the KCS Way for Special Education to provide that consistency. One of the other things that I had mentioned in the fall that we did, we've provided some bi-weekly administrative training. So, every Wednesday, or two times a month, we provide a Wednesday afternoon training that's open to all administrators in Knox County. Topics include manifestations, eligibility, the KCS Way, revisiting that, data-driven decision-making, and how to be an LEA, the local representative, in an IEP meeting. So, again, just trying to train principals, because if we're honest, when educators go to school, there's very, unless you're a special educator, you don't get a lot of training in special education. I mean, I can tell you, I've got four degrees in education, and I took one special education class as an undergrad, because I went to special ed teacher. So, nowhere in administration, nowhere did they provide you that direction to really, so our special ed department is really trying to help those people who don't have a background in special education know how to best handle those in their school. So, a lot of, a lot of those topics you'll see listed there. We've also done some additional trainings for other staff within the building. All new special ed teachers go through Special Education Institute. This is a multi-day training that we do to help kind of bring in new teachers to the KCS Way of doing things. And then also, at our district learning days, we've had special trainings for our teaching assistants that's been focused on supporting students in the general ed setting. As far as stakeholder engagement goes, as I mentioned to you all last time, I think we talked about kind of our first meeting of the year. I did bring on three new members to the Special Ed Council, so we had regional representation across the district. We met this year, kind of did an intro and a review of, you know, what we're doing in special education and where we are in that process, and also just their role as the parent council, just to be a sounding board for me and also help direct some of that work. I will say, this, the parent council for me has proved to be more than that. I think one of the greatest things about it is it opened up another communication pathway so that parents feel like they've, they've got a voice and they can, and I will say, we have been able to address several issues that really aren't even in the realm of special education, just concerns they had as parents, but because they felt like they had somebody to talk to, were able to address it. One great story I'll share with you, you know, and this one really upset me, when this parent reached out to me, told us about, I think you all, you all know, we had the great initiative, we had the partnership with KEF where we provided new playgrounds, which sounds really great. And then one of my parents on the council reached out and said, you know, my son can't access that playground. And even though they're supposed to be ADA compliant, they weren't really ADA functional. And so, because this child's in a wheelchair, he was sitting on the side while he watched his friends play. And if that doesn't bother you, something's wrong, and we can't stand for that. So, fortunately, I have a great team of people that I work with. I reached out to Dr. Adams and Ms. Himmelgarn, and they have people who are working on the playground stuff, and we were able to come up. They used ADA compliance money, and we now have rubberized pathways so that child can play with his same age peers, because that's the way it should be. So, again, that, those are the things, to me, that's what matters. way it should be. So again, that, those are the things, to me, that's what matters, and that's why we have Special Education Council. And, you know, I was really glad that we were able to work and get some things like that taken care of. And that's not the only one. You know, there were several situations where parents on the council had issues, something going on with their child. You know, I reached out to Dr. Wilson about something that had nothing to do with special education, but it needed to be addressed. And when I was made aware of it, we were able to address that. So, you know, lots of good things coming out of the special ed council. Obviously, they have participated in our, in our analysis year. This year, they did an individual kickoff to be able to ask questions, to get an idea of what PCG had planned. And then also, they participated in their own focus group, and then we had the surveys and all that. So there's been a whole lot of involvement with the special ed council and our special ed parents this fall. I kind of mentioned that, the strategic plan engagement. We did increase the number of focus groups because we had such, and I believe I shared that with you all last time. As far as enhancing our engagement, you know, part of my operational plan this year has been to look at getting more feedback. And so, you know, we produce a special ed parent newsletter, and we added a feedback component for that, which has been really helpful, because I spoke with Sue Owenby today, and it really has helped to guide some of the things they've done, specifically the October Family Resource Fair. So she really wanted to do like a conference where she could have these experts come in and share. And parents said, that's really not what we need. We need to learn more about the resources and supports that are out there for special ed families. So they were, we use their feedback to guide that. We've also had the ability to partner with some, from some partnering organizations. So we're having other people, experts in the field, to come in and share with our parents on subjects such as all things behavioral from the Tennessee Voices, the why and what and how of communication from STEP, conservatorship and special ed planning from Smoky Mountain Legacy, and how to avoid conflict by the ARC. So had a lot of, a lot of good partners to come in and help us do this work, and help engage, and help parents know how to better support their child. So here's the exciting part, LRE, which means that eighty percent of our kids, we want to get to where eighty percent of our students with IEP spend eighty percent of their time in the general ed setting. Currently, our goal for this year, and that's a multi-year goal to get to eighty percent, but our goal for this year is seventy-seven point two. We are currently sitting across the district at seventy-nine point two-nine, and all five regions have met that target. We have also exceeded our twenty-five, twenty-six goal, which is next year, which is seventy-eight point three-four. So we are having more children included. We are getting more kids in the general education setting more often. All regions, as I said, met that target, and sixty-four out of our ninety-one schools are above that. So not just are we meeting the average, we're also individually, you know, the majority of our schools are making that target. More exciting than that is the academic gains. If you look at those trends at the bottom, we've seen an increase in ELA proficiency over the past two years by one point four percent, and in math by three point five. So not only are our kids spending more time in the general ed setting, it's showing results. And we all know that to be true. When kids are exposed to high-quality instructional materials, when they're in the tier-one instruction, they're going to get the material, they're gonna understand it better, and they're gonna perform better. So obviously, inclusion is something that we all want, and we are doing our best and striving to get kids included more often and spend more of their day in the general ed setting. All right, so the final one is our strategic plan for education, and again, just want to kind of circle back. Dr. Ryswick mentioned several of these things a little while ago, but basically, our long-term, what we're working on this year is to develop this three-to-five-year strategic plan to improve achievement for all students. We've seen an improvement, but we can always do better. You know, we're always, as Dr. Ryswick referenced, we're always looking at continuous improvement. And so no matter how good we're doing, we can always do better. We want, again, move more and more students in the general education setting. We've meet and exceeded our goals for LRE, but that's not good enough. We want to continue to do that. And then finally, obviously, we want to improve special education supports to keep students in their zone schools. We don't want to have to move a child from place to place just to get the services they need. We'd like to provide that continuum of supports within the, within the building. A lot of this, again, is gonna be kind of a refresh of what we've talked about before, but if you'll remember, in September, we kicked off the project. October through December was really that analysis stage. That's where they came out. They sent out surveys, got over twelve hundred response. We did thirty-nine focus groups to get person-to-person input on the status and their feelings about special ed. We also provided all the work that had been done by the Ackerman Group prior to me coming into this role. So the, we gave them the recommendations from the task force, we provided the Ackerman Report. We gave them all the data and everything we have. We continue to have weekly check-ins with PCG, so just today, we had a meeting to follow up on some data pieces that they wanted. So we're continuing to pull data and get them the information they need. They did school visits, so visited every region in our district, did over sixty schools, all levels, all different programmings, all of our special day schools. So they, they really got a good glimpse at what special education looks like in Knox County schools. And the end of that is, you know, doing a top-to-bottom review of those services for our students with disabilities. Again, I mentioned that stuff at the bottom, but that's all a part of that data collection that they did, October through December. So what's coming up next? Right now, as I said, we're continuing to engage with them, give them the information they need, provide, you know, answer any questions they have. And then they will, actually, they're writing their report now. They will present that to us. And then the final, after that report is issued, we'll work with them over in April and May. I'm hoping really it's sooner than that, but really working with the council, with their schools' leadership, special ed department, and PCG to write that strategic plan, which then we will bring to you. I hope that is our next quarterly update. We will be coming to you with that strategic plan to talk about, here's where we are, here's where we're doing well, here's some areas we can improve in, and here's our plan to get there. So what are our next steps? In the staff development world, we're gonna continue to do principal trainings. Some of those trainings are really what we're looking at, is what are timely things that principals need to know? What are the hot topics? A lot of those are generated by principal questions and interests that they have, but also just helping to prepare them for what's coming up. For example, you know, in the spring, one of the sessions we'll be doing is on grade transitions, how to have a transition meeting, and who to include, and, you know, how to navigate that process to make sure we may have a smooth transition from one grade or from one school to the next. One of the things that our special ed department is doing right now, they're actually providing a monthly calendar to principals to let them know the things that they need to do on a monthly basis. So these are timely reminders. Each month may have some similar things, but also some specific things that they need to have in that month. For example, we're in January right now, so what they're reminding principals of is we need to be looking at students' IEPs, and we need to be looking at their class schedules to make sure their hours of service are matching, and they're getting what needs to be given to them through their IEP. We also have, are training all the assistants in our special day schools and other high-need area schools, so schools that have special programming, like say, autism support program. But basically, all of those assistants are gonna receive a forty-hour training to become RBTs, which are registered behavior technicians. They will complete that by spring break, and at that point, our own VCBAs, which are the board-certified behavioral analysts, will provide the supervision that's required. Travis always tries to remember to give the acronyms. I know, we've got a bunch of them. But they will provide the certification, the supervisions, so those people can receive that RBT certification. Again, stakeholder engagement, I'm actually meeting with the council again tomorrow. I'm gonna share a lot of this information. They asked for an update, and so they felt like I'd have a good dry run today, and tomorrow I'd be ready to go to give them the, you know, this is, this is kind of the warm-up session, I guess, and I'll give them the real one tomorrow. And obviously, we, Sue Owenby, our ombuds person, has a special ed parent empowerment committee that she meets with. Again, a lot of that's driven the topics and the things that she covers by the, by the parents and the results of that survey that's, that's in the newsletter that we send out. They, I lost that, I had her information, but I've misplaced that. So another thing that's not in there, and, but I want to mention, as far as we talk about what things are we doing to provide, I know a lot of you, like I mentioned, you probably get lots of questions, and I know a hot topic right now is modified content. Modifying content for students is actually the role of the regular education teacher. However, what we did to help facilitate that is we've hired an inclusion coach. And so now we have someone who's got a track record of being successful in supporting inclusion services within the classroom. This is a special ed person who's going to be able to go into schools and help our regular ed teachers modify that content, so that we have, you know, appropriate materials that are aligned with the curriculum and are high-quality, so that we can continue to expose our students to that. Additionally, Dr. Loew, I spoke with today, there's been lots of questions about where we are with the modified content bank. Her plan is to work with our communications department and the new website to have a submission portal where parents, community members, advocates, whoever can upload information that we can make accessible to teachers. So again, that's a, that's a big work. We've provided exemplars and trainings on how to do that, but obviously, there's, you know, there's still work to be done in that area. Couple other things I wanted to do, but I think that pretty well wraps it up. So if you all have any questions or anything I can hopefully answer.
Ms. Pike?
Thank you. I have a few questions.
Okay.
First, I would like to say thank you for this presentation. It's been very helpful, and for all the work you're doing and that your team is doing. I really appreciate that you've put that feedback on the end of the newsletter. I think that that is gonna go really great, because definitely some feedback that I had heard previously from parents are that they felt like the newsletter wasn't quite hitting for them, and sometimes felt a little condescending, you know, especially if you're a parent that's been doing this your whole child's life with them. There's a certain amount of skills you already have. And, and then, of course, the parents that are reading the newsletter are the parents that are already putting in that effort. But some things that I know that you are already thinking about, your team is already thinking about, and stuff that I brought up in our annual workshop, but I would love to see in some of this, this reporting and data, how you guys are kind of looking at students that are falling kind of on both ends of the bell curve. Because I know that that's still, you know, as you explained, still falls in special education with giftedness, and then the other end where you need heavy supports, or some amount of supports. But the, you know, that there are students that do fall on both sides, and to be intellectually gifted and be all the way on that side, I think that there are some barriers to get to there. If you, you know, twice-exceptional students, I know that I've, I'm beating a dead horse to a certain extent here, but there are quite a bit of students that, you know, may be exceptional at math, and I mean like very exceptional, but are not, are maybe average or below average in reading, ELA, and things like that, that are not meeting that criteria to be classified as intellectually gifted. And then we're seeing behavioral issues and other things that are happening, and then those students are losing track, and we're losing them. And then those parents are becoming frustrated. So I'd really like to see kind of what we're doing to address that and have some sort of, because as I understand it right now, you, it's an average of both, and they're not looked at individually. Is that correct?
I'm not a school psychologist, so I-
Okay. That's how I currently understand it, but I'd love to see if there's a way to kind of separate it, or have a rubric of like, okay, well, if they're here but this, then they still can kind of access those things.
And I would say, just aside from, because here's the thing, I think too many times we're worried about all the pathways, and it becomes complicated. I don't know the answers to, you know, how, how school psychologists determine intellectual giftedness versus, you know, just providing services. The thing that I do know is that once a student receives an IEP, I think that opens the doorway for services at any level. And so I think through those IEP meetings, like, the parents need to voice their concerns, and let's make sure that we're meeting with those. And if they don't get the answer they want from a school, you know, reach out to the supervisor, or reach, you know, like, reach out to downtown and let, let us support, because that's what they're for.
I completely understand that, but I think that that's sometimes where parents get frustrated, is that they're kind of, you know, told, not necessarily no, but they're saying, oh, well, your child doesn't qualify, so too bad. And then, you know, you've already done all of this work, and then it's hard to continue pushing and continue pushing, and sometimes you just don't have the time, or know who to call, where to call, and all of that stuff. So I think kind of making that easier and more accessible, but also us, KCS, kind of modifying that to make it accessible for students and parents to access that, because that's, you know, if you can't get the IEP, if you can't get the 504, then that's kind of the barrier to that. And that's kind of what I mean. Because I think that there are many families that kind of fall in that gap. And then with that, is, when you are talking about special education, I just want to ask this again, is ADHD and dyslexia classified under special education?
It depends. So we address dyslexia through the ILPDs, and usually that's addressed through a 504 plan. ADHD can sometimes be addressed through a 504, and sometimes does require an IEP. Either way, if the student has an IEP, then section 504 is covered under that. It's kind of a, an umbrella. So yes and no?
Yeah. And I guess to expand on my question with that and where it's coming from, is that I've heard a lot of parents, especially with ADHD, that have been told that, well, you, your student might, you know, you go through the tests and the, and the questionnaires, and the teachers do the questionnaires, and there might be a mark of, oh, probably ADHD. But then you're told, well, this is under medical, and so you need a medical diagnosis, and we don't do that for you. Therefore, your student can't get, and I could, I could probably think of five families off the top of my head right now that are in that situation. They're having to pay for private evaluations for ADHD, my family included, in order to access those things. And they're being told that you can't have access to those supports, unless you have a medical diagnosis.
Well, it's true. We can't develop a 504 plan or give someone services without that medical diagnosis. But I do know that we also, I think we offer screeners, so that if, if that's something that parents need, you know, we can have teachers and families do those screeners, and then they can just take it to their pediatrician, and they can do that diagnosis.
Yeah, I guess there are some pediatricians that are reluctant to give that diagnosis. And then that also requires, you know, families to have an appointment and to go through all of that, which does cost money and time. And, you know, especially if you're already coming to school for the meetings and all of that stuff, you know, you essentially can't have a full-time job if you're doing this. And that's really hard for families. And so those families already have those barriers, and I wonder how we're helping with those barriers, to break down those barriers?
Well, I mean, 504s and IDA are federal laws, so there are certain restrictions and there are requirements that we have to meet in order to provide services through those. So I don't know that we have a good answer for that question. I mean, we're always willing to help facilitate and to help any way we can. Like I said, we can do screeners, we can provide testing internally, and even if they don't agree with our testing, they can request an independent evaluation, which we also pay for.
Yeah. If a, if a screener's done, though, and the screener does show that, oh, yeah, there's a tendency for this, then does that mean-
We still have to have a doctor to give a medical diagnosis. That's a, yeah, that's not a-
And so there's no way around not having a doctor to have that medical diagnosis?
No, because to get an IEP with ADHD, that falls under other health impairment, and in order to have that, you have to have a medical diagnosis of that impairment.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's, that's really unfortunate for a lot of families.
But I do think we have places like the Vine Clinic and other, you know, again, I understand it does require taking off and taking your child to the doctor, but again, we can help facilitate that, and even, you know, if they have problems, our social workers can get them hooked up with the Vine Clinic, and it shouldn't cost them anything.
Are those resources that are readily given to families?
Yeah. If, if we know that they're needed, or if they're asked for, yeah.
I guess there, there are definitely some families that probably don't want to say that they need that help.
Sure, yeah.
And so I wonder if that's something that-
Well, I would always, if you have a family that has a need, and they don't feel like it can be met, I would always encourage them to reach out to their school social worker. The social workers literally have books full of resources and how they can help them get the help that they need, and help them navigate that, those pathways.
Okay, yeah. And then next is kind of in the same vein of, you know, I really love that we're working towards being a model district, and I think we're getting there, and we're going that direction. But I also wonder about kind of like, just the- But I also wonder about kind of like, just the culture of, you know, special education and it being this box that you kind of feels like you have to enter into in order to get those things when like, sometimes, I've used the analogy before of that, you know, I participated in a thing where we had to build a ramp because we had someone that had a, needed access to a stage and found that actually everyone benefited from the ramp. And so I wonder if there are ways in our classrooms, and I know a lot of teachers are already doing it, but it's not necessarily across the board, that, you know, a lot of students that don't yet have ADHD or an autism diagnosis or are kind of on the edge of like, is it or is it just a, you know, some temporary behavioral things and auditory issues and things like that, that, you know, we're looking at like the lights and the different like things that could trigger a student to have those behavioral reactions in our classrooms. I think that that's definitely something that could get us there and help a lot. And I wonder if that's something that you're looking at in this.
Yeah. I will say modifications, accommodations, things that can be done for special education students benefit all students. However, I don't, I don't have any, I'm not over general education. That'd be Dr. Wilson.
Right.
So we can try, like, we can share things and we can make suggestions, and I think, again, that's what we're trying to do with this Inclusion Coach. We're hiring people out of our budget and our funds to try and support the general education classroom. Because I do agree with you. I mean, we see great results from a lot of things. I'll never forget, it's probably been 20 years ago, but I went to a Vanderbilt training from the Triad Group, and we learned about, you know, things to do for children with autism in the classroom. And I thought, these aren't just good things, you know, for a child with autism, these are good things for all children.
Yeah.
And so I think, you know, yes, I think that's great and I would love to do that and I'm more than willing to partner with Dr. Wilson and we would provide trainings for general ed teachers. We'd love to do things like that.
I think that's great and it's something I'd really love to see. I think lots of people would love to see.
Yeah. I've had that conversation with Dr. Loi and she said, I'm ready tomorrow. If, you know, if gen ed teachers want to come and talk about how to modify and how to do things and, you know, how to make a more inclusive classroom, you know, we're all for it. That's what I'll say, as far as, you want me to address culture, there's not a single person that I work with on a daily basis that doesn't want to help every single child in a classroom and meet every modification and do all the things to help them be the best that they can be and to reach their highest potential. The perception of special education being a place or this box or something that you have to get into, you know, those individual cultures are set at the building level. And one thing that I will say, you know, this is, you've probably heard Dr. Reiswick talk about, this is the year of the principal. And one of the things that we've tried really hard to do and he's tasked us to do is to get out in schools, and I can tell you personally, in the first semester, I visited 27 schools, middle, high, and elementary. I've got four more scheduled this week. And part of what I do is to go in and, because the culture of a building is what's going to create that inclusive environment. And as much as all the people in the central office that I work with and the Special Ed Department want that, 91 schools doing 91 different things, you know, what we've tried to do with the KCS Way is to provide some of that consistency and then check up and make sure. So hopefully, again, it never happens fast enough. It didn't happen fast enough for me. I know it doesn't happen fast enough for parents, but we are doing our best to work on that culture, to make sure that we provide that inclusive culture and that inclusive setting at every building where every child feels like they belong and they aren't in a box somewhere because that's not okay.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your work and I know that this isn't easy, so I do really appreciate it and answering my questions.
Yeah. And I will say that too. You know, somebody came up to me before the meeting and said, I'd never take your job. And I think I told you all when I first took this job, I love this job because every day what we do gets to impact kids. And we get to impact kids who are at greatest risk for not being able to reach their potential, for being marginalized and being disenfranchised and moved away from the norm. So we get to find ways to get them into the classroom and to get them what they need so they can access their education, and that's exciting work for me. I told Ms. Himmelgaard, I hope she didn't take offense to this, but I wouldn't want to be over the budget. I don't want to deal with the stuff in HR every day so she can keep her job. I get to make a difference for kids every day and that's exciting.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
I do want to piggyback on that a little bit, and I do appreciate all the work that's been done. Thank you for doing this presentation and all the work that's been put into it. And I have heard from many parents who aren't feeling that change yet, you know, at their level. And so I do think that we need to supercharge this action, you know, we need to take more action. I would love to see our spend department be the envy of all communities and communities coming to us and saying, oh my gosh, how are you guys doing that? We want to model that. But I think we do have a long way to get there. So what do you need from us? How can we support? How can we, how can we, I don't know, fast pace engage?
Yeah. I don't know how to change people's perceptions. I will tell you, when you say you want us to be a model for special education, most of the districts around do come to us. They do ask, because what we are doing is far and away better than what they're able to do just simply because of our size. We have 91 schools. We have, Mr. Mosman provided me some statistics today on the increase that we have seen in the number of teachers and the assistance that we've provided and how that's cut down on the student-to-teacher ratio in our special ed classrooms and the support that we're providing. Because of that, we can provide services and programming that other school systems just don't have. I mean, just this last semester, we had visitors from multiple surrounding counties come and visit several of our schools to look at our programming and how we're doing things. So I, you know, again, I think we're doing the right work. I think where we struggle right now is what I mentioned a minute ago, and we're trying, I don't think that's just solitary to special ed. I think if we asked Dr. Wilson about the implementation of HQIM in the ELA classrooms, he probably would say there are some schools that do it really well and some schools are kind of being resistant, dragging their feet. And we're seeing that as well, and we're trying to target our interventions on those schools that we think need support. I had a conversation with Ms. Lautner earlier this, actually last week, about the school improvement process. And we identify those schools, you know, talked to Dr. Loi today about providing a menu of supports that if they identify that this is an area I've got to improve based on, you know, when we, when they do all their data analysis and they recognize that their special ed students aren't making the gains everyone else is, now how are we going to come in and support your school to make sure that you're providing that inclusive environment, exposing those students to on-grade level materials so that they can make the gains that they're capable of making?
Thank you for that. I also wanted to ask, so you said that the consultant that's coming to help with, you know, with the strategic plan, they, that person or that organization will be working with the Special Ed Council? That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know the committee reported back challenges to the system, so I want to make sure that they're input and they're working alongside each other. Okay. And then talk to me a little bit about the modified content. You know, I've heard from many parents about modified content. Is that going to be part of the strategic plan so that way it's just, is there going to be a recommendation on that? I know you said that there, there's going to be a way to put it on the website?
Yeah. So that's what we're hoping. Dr. Loi has received lots of emails and, you know, we're trying to figure out what is the best way. Part of the problem with modified content is that, and not the problem, it's the good thing, is that it's individualized. So each child, you know, we modify the content for that individual to make sure it still is aligned with those grade level standards that they're learning in that science class or that English class, you know, whatever it is. So the creation of a bank is problematic because in my, in my mind, that's no better than just handing out worksheets to a student.
Right.
If we have all these pre-prepared things, what our special ed department has done is they've provided exemplars that show how we can modify that individual content to make sure that you are making that information, that's standards-aligned, accessible to that student without just handing them a worksheet here or there.
Yeah. Yeah. Because I don't want to see that. Yeah.
I've also encouraged those parents who have reached out to me, I've encouraged them, work with your school, work with your teacher. Ultimately, it's the gen ed teacher's responsibility to provide content. That's the role. And we've recently received guidance from the special ed department at the state level to say, that is the role of the general education teacher, is to modify every child that comes into their building. And I try to remind people of this all the time, every student is a general education student. Special ed just comes along to help them access that general education. So again, to go back to Ms. Bike's question about the box, everybody's in this box. Everybody's in the general ed box and they are assigned to a teacher and that's who's responsible for their education. What we've provided is that guidance and those exemplars to show them how to modify that content, and now we've got an inclusion expert of our own who has done this for years and has proven, has a proven track record of being successful, who's now going to assist teachers in that. So, you know, again, we want to open up for submissions to allow that to happen. My encouragement to those parents would always be, talk to your child's teacher. If you want to provide materials to them, they may take them and use them. It's the teacher's responsibility to make sure that it's aligned to the standard that they're teaching and appropriate for that child.
Okay. I guess that's where I'm confused. If it's aligned to the standards and you have parents and community members submitting it, and then the teacher takes that and then decides if it's aligned to the standards? Or is this teacher submitting it so that other teachers can use it? Does that make sense?
If we open up the portal, anyone could submit. Right now, the onus of modification falls on the general ed classroom teacher. And so currently, we have the exemplars that they can use to see how to modify.
Yeah.
It is their responsibility to follow the standards that are set forth by the state for the curriculum and for the grade level and the subject that they're teaching.
Okay. I guess I'm just confused. If I'm a parent of a special ed child and I submit modified work, but I'm not a teacher...
Correct. Therein lies the problem.
Right.
Yes.
So who's submitting it on the website?
The parents can because they're the ones who are wanting to submit it. And like I said, I would encourage them to talk to their teacher because the teacher can give them feedback like, well, actually, we're studying this and it needs to look more like this and, you know, like, but again, we're trying to, we're trying to open all pathways. Like I said, I'm not opposed to it. We want to make life easier on everybody and recognize that it's not easy work. Being a classroom teacher is tough.
Oh, absolutely.
And when you're having to modify work and I feel like I'm getting a little Amin section over here from my friend Paula Hancock, because we meet with Ms. Hancock and some special ed teachers and, you know, on a monthly basis to talk about some of the things, and it's tough. It's hard work. But we all get into this field because we want to do what's right and we want to make a difference for kids.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Thank you for answering my questions.
Yep.
Ms. Templeton?
I had to rethink some of my questions because you hit on several of them. Actually, most of them. Thank you, Ms. Anderson, for that.
You're welcome, Ms. Templeton. I'm here now.
I appreciate you reading my mind. First, thank you.
Sure.
This is fantastic because as I get so many emails, ironically, over the month of December, a lot, probably as people are looking to the next semester and preparing and things like that. So you answered quite a few of those. It's very thorough and I appreciate the gains that you're making in recognizing that each child has a special set of needs and trying to meet those accordingly. Thank you for that. I also had a question about this modifications bank. You explained it very well, but you said something and I just need you to clarify it for me.
Okay.
Because you said it early on about just special ed training in general and how that's lacking in the training for teachers, right? Just with any teacher going through school.
Sure.
How much knowledge do they have-
Right.
-in special ed? And so if the onus is on the gen ed teacher to create these modifications, that feels unfair. And I believe you've recognized that and created the Inclusion Coach as someone a gen ed teacher can rely on. My concern is that we've got 91 schools and a lot of children-
Sure.
-falling on both sides of the bell curve. So, and then it goes back to how do we help you? How do we help these teachers meet the needs of these individualized kids, meet their goals?
Yeah. And I would agree with you. As I said, we've recognized and we would love to give more training, but the problem is, is on those district learning days when we have the opportunity, schools have school plans, they're working on goals, they need time with teachers, curriculum, content people, the social studies and science people and the English and the math people, they want to pull everybody in and meet with them. And usually, the special ed department is working with special ed teachers. So it's, it makes it difficult. I mean, time is a factor. There's just not a lot of great opportunity for experts in the area of special education to train general ed teachers. And I'm absolutely not opposed to that, but again, that would be a conversation Dr. Wilson and I would need to have and how do we prioritize that over, you know, making sure teachers are trained in presenting highly quali, high-quality instructional materials in their content.
Are the special ed teachers, this is going to somewhat show my ignorance, so I'm just going to ask the question.
Sure.
I mean, they are using high-quality content as well.
That's correct.
And so are they being also utilized in creating some of this modified content as resources? Obviously, I understand the onus falls on the teacher.
Sure. And I would say that probably depends on the school and, again, going back to 91 schools, everybody's staff differently, there are different programs, there are different services. But yes, a special education teacher in the building would work with-
Can do that.
Absolutely. Yes.
There are no hands tied there. There's nothing that would hinder that kind of conversation collaboration.
No. Their job is to make sure that we're meeting the needs of those children with the IEP in that school building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Christie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my comments are short and relatively easy. I think I see where the disconnect is now with modified content, so I am thankful for this presentation. And hopefully, the strategic plan can address some of these concerns as far as how we operate within the schools and, you know, I'm very hopeful for that. I'm a little curious as to how many IEPs we have because when you think about that, that's a different plan for each child-
Sure.
...because they're all very different. So I appreciate the heavy lift that this is and the work that has been done. Again, I think the strategic plan might help guide some of that work, but also, just a shout out to you because we did have issues at one of my schools right before Christmas break and you were there. You personally came out like the next day or the day after, and I know the staff and principal, everyone was very appreciative of that. They felt heard. The problem wasn't easy to fix, but they had a better understanding of what needed to be done and the work that is being done. So I am very appreciative of that and your team and District Board.
Well, Ms. Christie, what I will say to both of those things, you know, first and foremost, I mean, I admitted here on record, I'm not an expert in special education. We have a director of special education who is, that works for me. I would say that I'm an expert in kids because that's what I got into this job to do. And so I don't, I don't care if the kid has an IEP, if they don't have an IEP, if they live in South Knoxville, if they live in East Knoxville, if they live in West Knoxville, they're all our kids and they all deserve the ability to access their education. On the modified content subject, I will say, I feel like the situation that you've probably been copied on emails and I've been copied on emails in your, in your district, it seems to be going really well. And I think the key to that is open communication. It seems that the principal and the parent and the case manager and even our supervisors are all involved, they're all in the team, and that's the way it should work. And if it's not working like that in any of the schools that you all hear from, please let me know. I mean, you all, you all have my number, you know how to email me. We want to know where it's not working well so that we can go and address that. If communicate, and I think the key to all that's communication. They have an open line of communication and they're working together with that parent. Is it perfect? Probably not, but they're working together and that's what this is about. Like, in the end, we all have the same goal, the parent, the teachers, the principals, the special educators, the general educators, we all want what's best for that child. Nobody got into education, much less special education, to mistreat a child or to not do what's best for them and to provide the best educational experience they possibly could. And so I think, you know, what's happening right now in your district is our glowing ex- Um, and so I think, you know, what's happening right now in, in your district is our glowing examples of, of how it can work right. That doesn't mean we're there everywhere. Like I said, we've got 91 principals and 91 cultures, you know? And even in South Knoxville, Bonnie Kate doesn't look like Dogwood or South Knoxville or, or New Hopewell. They're all individual and they all have their own school culture. And we rely on the leaders in those buildings. So that, that's, if I could encourage anything, it would be to have open communication. And you don't have to be an expert in special ed, but reach out to the people who are. And they'll get you the supports and they'll find a way to make it work. And if they don't explain it well enough, reach out to somebody else and, you know, try to get the, get the explanation that makes sense to you. So thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Thank you for your presentation, for all this information and for what you do. I think I appreciate the passion that you have for kids and for seeing every kid as an individual and not checking a box of a diagnosis. Uh, that's really important to me and I'm glad that we have your perspective in that, in this work. I think that filters down into everything that we do and that's really important. Uh, I did want to brag on, in the fall, I sat down with, um, Mrs. Param, the principal at Fairgag Intermediate School. And our Sped students there had grown, I wish I had the numbers in front of me and I could be way off, but tremendously in the data. And from the year before. And I asked her why, what they did that did that, and she said it was inclusion. And it is, um, it's just, it's exciting. It's really great to see that. And I, our staff at, at all of our schools, all of my schools have been, uh, they just do a fantastic job. So I do want to brag on them. Um, and then my, um, my one thing, I would love to ask if we could reconsider, um, the mindset. You, you had said this to Ms. Henderson, that you do think we are a model district for Sped. Um, as a parent of two students with IEPs, uh, and we've been doing this for, I've been doing this for a long time now, uh, with my kiddos. Uh, and from what I hear from other parents and from teachers in our district, it feels like we have a disconnect, um, in general. With maybe how families see it, maybe how some of our teachers see it. And maybe how it's been presented somewhat from what you said. Um, while our staff is amazing, my kids' teachers are incredible, I adore them. I still, as a parent of a special ed student, would not say we're a model district, uh, for Sped. And I want us to be so badly. So I would just love to ask if you would reconsider that perspective and maybe take that into the evaluation of what's going on. Because I do think we could do a lot better for our Sped students.
A hundred percent. And, and please don't, I, I did not mean that to sound like we've arrived by any stretch of the imagination. I just, we are a big district, which means that we're under a big microscope. Um, and so that also gives us the opportunity for a lot of variation from one school to the next. And I think, like I said, there are places where we are really nailing it and there are places where honestly, we probably aren't. And I think that's the great thing about, you know, the analysis that's being done is I think it's going to give us a really good 30,000 foot view of where we are. And, and the trends that they see in our district and some specific things that we can work on. Hopefully that includes trainings and other things that we will, like I said, we've tried to identify some of that on our own and provide some of those things in the interim to make sure we are moving in the right direction. You know, no, we're not perfect. And, and no, I, I did not mean that to say we're a model district. Like we're, no, we, we've got room to do better, but, but we're doing good work. And I've, and I'm like, I know the people are doing their best. Um, and that's why we wanted to have a third party to come in from the outside with fresh eyes to say, hey, I know this is what you've been doing. Here's some way you could do that better. Um, and, and we welcome that, you know? Like, as Dr. Rosewick said, our goal is continuous improvement. We're going to continue to look at our practices and the things we're doing and see how we can get better each and every day.
Yeah, I love that. And I'm so looking forward to the report from that. And I appreciate you guys diving into that and having a third party come in and look. Cause I know from, before I was on the board was when the resolution was passed and you all dove into this. And, um, I appreciated the perspective of, hey, we have a lot of room to grow. And, and I think we still have a lot of room to grow. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, that we're eager to grow and excited for what's to come.
Yeah, absolutely. And so again, I, I did not mean that to, to sound like I've, we've arrived or yes, we are a model district. Um, but I also know that historically, like I said, I, our special ed teachers work really hard and I want to recognize that. Um, and, and I think, I hope that they're all doing the best job that they think they can do. Um, and that doesn't mean we can't get better. Uh, but I, you know, I, I, I think sometimes those people who do the tough work sometimes feel like they're underneath it. And just being beaten down all the time. And so I, I want to acknowledge that they are doing work and it is hard work. Um, but they're doing the right work and, but it doesn't mean we can't do that work better.
Mr. Triplett?
Dr. Brown, thanks for the presentation and.
Sure.
Putting yourself in the line of fire for a bunch of questions about a very broad and difficult topic. Uh, you talked about training, bi-weekly administrator training, staff training, all that. You also talked about some schools are doing it great, some there's, you know, at times a measure of resistance to change, that kind of thing. Um, I guess my question is really around accountability, you know? Um, uh, without accountability, training really just becomes motion, right? It's just motion with no real action. So what, you know, how are we holding people accountable to say, all right, well, you've been trained to do this. Now I'm falling, following up to make sure you're following through with what I've trained you to do.
That's a great, great question. A couple of ways. I mentioned that we're doing, you know, the, the drop-ins and IEPs, checking the KCS way, making sure they're following that. And then those supervisors are following back up with principals to, to make sure, do we see a pattern? Is it the same case manager? Is it a school-wide problem? You know, so we can address that as needed. Uh, I will also say one of the things that Dr. Wilson, I have thrown off to Dr. Wilson several times. But one thing that he has invited us, so we meet, my whole team goes and meets with the regional directors. Cause they are the ones that hold principals accountable. Ultimately, the principal's responsible for what happens in their school building. And they answer to their regional supervisors and directors. We are kind of like the sidecar that provides support so the motorcycle doesn't fall over. Um, but, you know, they're driving it and they're the wheel and steering it, you know, they're the, they're the, the motorcycle itself. So we, uh, we go to the regional director meetings periodically. We share information, we share trainings, we give them things that they can look for. Excuse me. Um, so there is a level of accountability and Dr. Wilson has been great to open the doors and invite us in. To make sure that we can follow up with what we are providing and what we are expecting from principals and schools in the world of special education.
Good deal. I, I think that is, you know, as you talked to some of these that have experiences that are not up to the standard.
Yeah.
That we sort of talk about and present in this room. You know, to me, it seems like it's that aspect of accountability where some may not be following through with what you're presenting here. If you present here, sort of the ideal scenario of what we're trying to train people to do.
Right.
It doesn't always get translated all the way down to the classroom. And that accountability piece, I think is vitally important to ensure that.
Absolutely.
Parents and students get what they need.
I agree.
And I guess my thing is too, because, you know, I do hear from parents that are frustrated. And, you know, what do you need from us to make sure that all the kids, all the families feel like they're being, and all the teachers have the resources and, you know, and supports that they need as well? Cause I know it's a tough job.
Yeah.
To make sure that we do become that model district. And, you know, I know I sound like a broken record, but, you know, we've, we've been talking about this work, um, for two years, which is 15% of a child's time with us. You know, it's a huge chunk in their lives. Where two years in my life isn't that big of a deal, but it is in the life of a student. And so, you know, I think that time is crucial. Um, everyone on the board, I know your staff has made it a priority. So, you know, I would love to see fast changes. Um, I look forward to the strategic plan and see what comes out of that and what recommendations, or the recommendations are included in that. So I look forward to that work as well.
Yep, absolutely, me too. We're all excited.
Does anyone else have any questions? All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia, you are next on the docket. Sophia's going to do a presentation on free period products in the schools for us.
Hello, everyone. I hope you all have had an amazing break. I'm presenting an update on the free period initiative that Aya and I started at the beginning of the school year. Unfortunately, Aya cannot attend this meeting because she is returning home from visiting family over the holiday. For those of you who don't, who do not know what this initiative is, I will give you a summary. Free Period Knox is a student-led initiative whose purpose is to make free period products easily accessible to every girl in high schools across Knox County. In the, in the bottom right of this slide, you can see our logo. Uh, there you go.
There we go.
Just take some of that in. I'm thoroughly impressed by how well things have gone in the first semester of this program being implemented. We have free period reps at 10 of the 15 Knox County high schools. The schools represented are listed above. These reps have truly carried out my vision in the schools by customizing it to fit each school's individual needs. I'd like to introduce Kaylee Reed. She is the representative of Central High School. She will be talking about what it's like to be a free period rep.
Hi, so our main responsibility is to refill the baskets around our school with the free period products that we offer. And we kind of pertain it to our individual schools and what we need for each school. Along with that, we communicate with Sophia and Aya in a group chat to give them updates on how things are going. Personally, at Central, I work with the nurse on the distributions around the school and unboxing everything that we receive.
So yeah, these are pictures of our reps. Not all of the ones we have right now are pictured, but these six submitted photos for me to put in our slideshow. So this is our poster. This poster you might see in some of the photos that are about to come. Um, Aya created that, this idea. The poster should be posted next to the baskets to help inform the reps when a basket is running low. It allows students to suggest improvements to our method of implementation. And while we have only had 10 star reviews from this form, we have also only had very few students interact with the QR code. So that is something we are looking, um, to fix is interaction with our poster. Shown above are pictures the reps have sent from their schools on how this is being implemented. Like I said above, some of the schools have made this project really unique to them. Kaylee has made it very unique and she will talk about how Central has implemented this in their high school.
So in order to keep our period products from being misused, we distribute them in a different way than a lot of the other schools are doing. Instead of putting them in the bathrooms around the school, we keep them in various locations in the school and make students aware of those locations. For example, we keep them in our nurse's office and a lot of the female teachers in our schools have them. When we run out, I make sure to go around every couple one, like weeks or so and make sure the teachers still have all the products that they need. If they run out before I go and check, they usually come find me or they go to the nurse and get them themselves. Um, but yeah, they make the female students aware that they have them in their rooms.
Yeah, I will say female teachers have been a very big driving force in this movement in informing all the students of the availability of this in our bathrooms and in our school. So here are our next steps. Our first goal is to fill the representative position at the remaining KCS high schools. They are listed above. Um, board members of these high schools, if you could just set me up with someone to email or talk to, um, that would be amazing. And our next goal is to figure out a way to collect data from the baskets, such as how much is being used, how often it is used, and how many students one basket could service. Overall, 2024 has been an amazing year for this project and I've been blessed to have the opportunity to work with it. I cannot wait for what 2025 has to offer. Are there any questions?
Ms. Templeton?
I beat you. It was like a race. Well done. Well done. Way to take a project from idea to execution. Well done, creating a plan, finding people. You found humans and how many high schools to do the things? Thank you. And found, and, and they found teachers who were supportive. And you are helping so many girls in the halls of those high schools and that is what is most important. And well done to both of you and your entire team. Thank you for doing this. Um, I did have a question though. Um, I'm over here, I tried to do the scan and I, I, I think this is a different scan on here than the one you probably have. But I'm curious how you are getting the word out at the high schools, um, to tell the ladies where to go to find products when they need them?
Oh yeah, that one doesn't work. Interesting. Um, just word of mouth.
Okay.
Oh, it does work.
Okay, then user error. It's on me.
Yeah, just word of mouth mainly.
But mainly word of mouth? Great, then I'm really interested to hear, um, how many people are using them, especially?
I would like to know that number myself. We, there's no real good way to count, right? But I do know that Halls has about 1,300 students. We have one basket in the upstairs freshman, um, academy and Halls is two levels and that's about it. The basket is empty every week, probably, every week. And there's about, I think I fit 35 products max in the basket, so 35 a week. Not, it's normally out in a week, but not like I'm leaving it left out like Friday, the last one's being taken. So probably like 35 a week. Um, the boxes that Knox County gets are full of 250 products. Uh, we have not gone through an entire box, but we went through, hmm, I would say about 210 in a semester.
Wow, you're really meeting a need. Thank you. Um, and where, where are they coming from? Where are the supplies coming from?
Um, Ms. Wagner has ordered them for all Knox County high schools. The nurses have them.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Thank you both for doing this and, um, really just filling a need. Thank you.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, someone on staff, but there, it is in the budget, I believe, that, that the schools do receive these items? Which is, yeah, so all the schools do receive them. I think even middle schools as well, they receive those. Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, that, that's me as well. Um, other than special ed, I also have all student service, supports and, uh, health services. And yes, Ms., as Sophia shared, Ms. Wagner does have that in her budget. She does provide those, um, and as they need more, her nurses put those orders in just like they would for Band-Aids or anything else. And we send, send those out to the schools.
Yeah, awesome, thank you. Ms. Bike?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think this is really awesome that this is, I'm, I think it's so cool that it's student-led and that the students are taking some responsibility in this and really getting involved. Honestly, this is like a huge, um, demonstration of your leadership and I really appreciate that. I think it's, it's so cool to see, you know, the future generation taking hold of something and really going with it. Um, and I'm curious kind of what you need from us to keep going. I know that you, you listed the high schools that you need contacts with, but are there other things that you all need to continue to be successful? It's okay if you don't have answers right now, but even if you want to think about it and maybe give us a report on what you need?
Yeah, um, there's nothing I could think of right now and I would probably like to talk to Aya who's gone before I answer that question, so.
Yeah, cool. And I, I'd love to hear at the end of the school year, kind of like how the school year went and everything that happened, trials, tribulations. And then, you know, if you did find a way to kind of start tracking these and, and other ways like, um, you know, do you need, uh, supplies for flyers to pass out? Or just anything like that? Um, I think, you know, feel free to let us know. And then I was also curious if I could ask if you wanted to share about any misuse issues?
I can. I was gonna say, I would ask Kaylee about that.
Uh, so our nurse, we had originally had some in our bathrooms, but they were running out in such a fast time that it seems like they were just being taken and not like used. So it was like, we'd put a basket out that was completely full and it'd be empty the next day. So we were just running out of products so fast. And we've also had some issues like, um, students sticking certain products to the walls and ceilings of our bathrooms, which is not the point, so.
Perfect. I love children.
Yeah, at Halls, there's only been one, one abuse, so.
That's great. Um, yeah, I'd love to know, you know, if, when you talk to the other student reps and at the end of the year, kind of like what they've seen, if they've seen any misuse. And then, you know, I hope that you, uh, pass this on and that it continues next year and kind of see, you know, what happens there too.
From talking with the other reps, um, Central's the only place. From talking with the other reps, Central's the only place that's had problems. So it's been really good. And everyone that I've talked to in the bathrooms just in passing, they really appreciate everything. And they're always like, oh, the board is just so nice for putting this in there. And I'm like, yeah, they really are.
I think it's okay for you all to take the ownership of it and say that it's something that you're doing. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Triplet?
Great job. A couple of things. One, I just sent your representative from Powell, so, you know, loop me in on the email. If they say no, I'll, I'll put some pressure on. And then the second thing is to follow with Kat. I would find, find a junior, you know, I don't know if all the reps are seniors or what, but find a junior to kind of go ahead and start now, taking on the project, and then you can pass it on to somebody else and kind of perpetuate that beyond, beyond the end of your senior year, so.
Yeah, currently, right now, we're partnering with the hostess of all the schools that have it. And I would, in my personal opinion, I'd like to work this project into the 865 academies, the ones that have the medical, life sciences. I feel like this goes right underneath that, and that being a way that they could serve and get an idea of something that they could be doing to help people. I'd like to see that implemented sometime.
That's awesome. Ms. Christie?
Thank you. And thank you, ladies. I just want to brag on Sophia a little bit because I know that she would not get up there and say this, but when we, we talk about leadership, now, correct me if I'm wrong, Sophia, but I believe people from other parts, other school districts and other areas have reached out to you about this project and how to start a similar project in their schools. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I know you have helped work with them as well, so, so thank you for that. Obviously, your reach is going far beyond Knox County schools. So I'm just really proud of you and, and this initiative and your, your leadership.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Good job, girls. Good job. You should be proud of yourselves.
Thank you.
That works. Awesome, thanks. Do we want to take a break, y'all, before we go into the? Yeah, okay. I was hoping other people did. Why don't we come back here at 6:40? It's currently 6:32. Does that sound good? All right.
Back. Hope everyone had a great break. We will now go into our regular session agenda, starting with item C, one or two. Actually, Dr. Adams, can you please kind of talk about the alternative bell time analysis? I know there was a blur minute about in our board update, but can you kind of go over that a little bit?
Certainly.
What that would entail?
Certainly, Madam Chair and members of the board. So, the bell time analysis is basically, we look at this for several reasons. One reason in particular is you look at the cost in living increase we have with our contractors, being competitive in the market. So, it really identifies areas where we could have additional buses and save money and be able to keep up with our competitors. It also gives an opportunity for the board to look at how it affects the district logistically, if it provides more transportation for students, give students more opportunities to access transportation. So, it's a really good data study for you all to look at with all of our departments in the operations division. We really challenged our executive directors to look at more efficient and effective operations. This is just one example of how Ryan and his team are doing that.
I'm really excited about this, and I always appreciate your out-of-the-box thinking on how to, you know, be creative, come up with creative solutions. Could this be used to help alleviate or eliminate a PRZ zone?
That is something that may be identified in the study. I don't want to speak to the study prior to them sharing that data with us, but that is something that could definitely probably come out of that.
Okay. I would like, I'm interested because I would like to see that. So, that way, all students have access to buses. So, I'm excited about this study. Thank you so much for giving a highlight.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Fonten Ridley?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. I was talking with my sister over the holidays, and she lives up in Louisville. And they did a study and totally revamped their busing system, and it was a nightmare. On the first day of school, the last student got home at 10:00 p.m. So, there is a lot, I don't know if it was because of the way they implemented it, or what. I think AI had a lot to do with it, and the bus drivers were not on their regular routes, and they couldn't use GPS. So, they were getting lost all over Louisville. So, I'm hoping that we take into account other systems possibly that have done this and kind of get some feedback from them, because it sounds like a really great idea. Just want to make sure that we're heads up from the get-go. So...
Thank you, Ms. Fonten Ridley. And what I will tell you is Knox County School is very unique, where we have over 50 contractors. And I've been in large districts where we've had one contractor. And when you do have one contractor, it is very problematic, because you have one contractor who has all of the routes. And when you look at multiple contractors that can divide up the routes, it makes those areas within your district a little easier to do a study on. So, we certainly have reached out to other districts prior to even looking at this study, and we've got a pretty overwhelming response of a positive response from those districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. All right, moving on, item C, three or four?
Yep.
Oh, yep, Ms. Mike.
Thank you. For both. I just want to disclose for number three, that if that is the one that I think it is, I am both friends and have worked with them. But I think that I can vote on this unbiasedly, so I don't think that's going to be an issue. But if I need to not, that is okay too. And then, number four, I am so excited to see this on our agenda. I know the AL Lots PTO has been waiting for this for a long time, and I am so excited to see it happen.
Awesome. I'm excited for them. They work very hard. Ms. Templeton?
Yeah, I need to disclose as well that I have worked with Fork Design in other, in previous lives, and responsibilities with the Maker City. So, just wanted to let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Just full disclosure.
Okay. I think, am I wrong, Mr. Depler, that they can vote on it because they are not benefiting financially? Is that correct?
Yes. That was going to be, thank you, Madam Chair. That was going to be one of my questions. I mean, do you all have a financial stake in Fork Design at this point? And if the answer's no, then, and I think you've both indicated that you feel like you can be unbiased, then you've made your disclosure, and you could move forward.
Yeah. I appreciate y'all bringing that up, though. Thank you for that. All right. Item five, or six, seven, or eight, or nine. All right, moving on then to board policies. A or B, C or D, or E. Okay. Grants, A or B, C or D, or E. All right, moving on then to regular agenda items. A or B. I would like to say for item A, on the superintendent's evaluation, thank you for working so hard on your personal or individual evaluations. I know it takes a lot of time, and they were all very thoughtful. And then, that is how I craft my memo, is just taking all of that information from the individual evaluation. So, thank you so much for putting the time into that. Okay. C or D? Mr. Triplet?
Yeah, I know Mr. Diggs is here, and I know he brought a whole crew of folks from Emerald Academy. And they have sat through a very long meeting just to represent the school. If you're with Emerald Academy, just stand up for a moment. That'd be great. And appreciate you all coming and supporting your school. And I know this is some parents and students, and I think maybe some alumni. Mr. Diggs, do you have anything to say and support, anything at all? You're good. Good. Very good. Appreciate y'all coming.
I just echo that. Thank you for coming out tonight. I know tonight was not a short meeting. So, thank you so much for supporting your school and your community. I know that Emerald Academy does amazing positive things for their students. Ms. Morgan?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo what you all said. I'm so glad to see you guys here. Thank you for all the work that you do in our community. And it was an absolute pleasure to get to visit the school and see the scholars last month, and learn more about what Emerald does. And I'm so thankful for the work and all the students, the scholars, that you are helping in our community. Ms. Mike?
Did you say D and E?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay.
Oh, wait. No, I think we were at D. But we can talk about E, too. That's fine.
Sorry.
Are we done with C, or?
C and D.
D?
C and D.
I just also wanted to thank, before we move on, the review committee for their thorough work as well. Thank you so much. Moving on then to E.
Thank you. That's the next year's school calendar. I just want to thank Cory and her team, and everyone, Keith, that have done, that constantly do the hard work of putting this together, and your teams, and working on the school calendar. I know a lot of times people think that, you know, it's just maybe one or two people that are deciding this, and then not considering things. I also want to thank everyone for their feedback and contacting the board. I think that this is one of the reasons this has happened. I think this kind of came a little bit out of us looking at the early release days and changing that. And we did say that we would come back in January and look at this. And, you know, it's been really great to talk to Keith about our calendar, and really dig into how the calendar is made, and, you know, all the decisions and options that we have. I really like option D. It seems like a lot of families and teachers also like option D. I appreciate that, you know, potentially our kids and teachers wouldn't have to do a half-day before Christmas on a Monday. And then, I also had one of my principals reach out today and say that, you know, her staff really had appreciated having, previously having, you know, a full two weeks on a winter break before, so that they can be refreshed and spend time with their families, or just doing whatever they need to do to recharge, to get back into the hard work of working with kids every single day. And so, I understand that option D doesn't change the coming back to spring semester on, and, you know, at the end of a week, and kind of missing that extra weekend. And I know that a lot of teachers will potentially take that day off. And then, also wanted to ask if Keith had anything to say in regards to this calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Mike. And I had an opportunity to talk to you for a moment this afternoon. You know, the, I will say, just kind of in bringing this back, this was a discussion, actually, that got lifted up last April, I believe, with some questions really around this same issue. And so, this was actually an option that we went back and developed at that time, and I shared with the board as, you know, potential, if we wanted to bring it back up for consideration. So, we're bringing this back at this point. And, you know, the, really, the change that is significant, and maybe different than what people I think are used to, is that we have tried to squeeze all that we are required to do in between that August 1st, being the first day back for teachers, and then, obviously, the Memorial Day, trying to get our last day for our teachers to be before that Memorial Day holiday. And some years are easier to do that than others. And this was a particularly difficult year because with Memorial Day falling on that last Monday of the month of May, it's very early in the month comparatively. If you look forward, as we think about planning for the 26-27 calendar, which we'll be doing this spring, we're going to have four, I think, five more days to work with. So, because it's like Monday, the 30th or 31st that it falls on. So, that gives us a little more wiggle room to do things like, think about that holiday break and the comeback time. And so, you know, obviously, we're always trying to account for a good, solid break and good timelines, you know, dividing lines for grading periods are another thing that we're really challenging in this, in this calendar. And so, those are all things we have to consider and kind of deal with the calendar that we have. And so, the change, as I mentioned, was that one of, it actually brings teachers back on July 31st, but it backs that day up, allowing our students to end on a Friday, rather than having that half-day Monday, and extending that break by a day for each, each of our teacher and our staff group, or staff and our student group, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Thank you so much for that option, and I'll definitely be voting to move to option D. Thank you.
Ms. Fonten Ridley?
I'm going to put my teacher hat on. I appreciate everything that you all did. I have been on a team that has worked with schedules within our school. It is not an easy thing. And you all are, y'all are awesome. Also, I want to thank Kat for bringing it to the discussion. As a teacher, it is difficult to teach a half-day on the 22nd. I'm just saying, close to Christmas. And then, even if you're not going anywhere, getting Christmas together, because from Thanksgiving to Christmas, it's crazy, and you don't have time to do anything. So, I really appreciate you all doing this hard, hard work to get it figured out. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Hey, I just wanted to highlight what Dr. Wilson said, because I, some, one of the things that I was hearing from people is that, that the schedule was, you know, not paid attention to, or it wasn't really looked at carefully and haphazardly done. And that's not at all the case. And you did bring it back up for consideration. So, I just want everyone to know that there is a lot of thought that does go into the schedule, and a lot of reasons behind it. And I appreciate you being willing to discuss it again for however many times it is. Also, I would like to throw a curveball in. We don't have to discuss it tonight. I know we're all probably pretty tired. But I'm having a hard time focusing on one part of the schedule without having discussed the early release days. And so, I would love to either have an idea on that for Thursday, or, I don't know if it's possible to punt this to the next, to next month's meeting, and we discuss it?
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that, I think our commitment last year, when we talked about the changes to the early release, is that we would do some additional surveying in the spring. We actually talked at the end of the December meeting with Ms. Mike about kind of that process and starting to do that, and thinking about kind of how we continue to gather input from our principals, our teachers, our families around those early release days. To your point, if you look at the calendar that has been adopted by the board for the 25-26 school year, it still reflects those early release days in the previous model that we did, which was those six days at two hours early release apiece, not the full, not the half-day that we moved to this year. So, that will be something that we'll have to consider, because we are on a different model this year now than we are, what we had originally put into that calendar. So, it will have to come back in terms of looking at the early release and all that. But we had, we had said we would do that based on additional feedback having been collected, and we haven't done that yet.
Okay, perfect. So, we will discuss that just in the future.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, guys. Ms. Mike?
You bring up a really great point, and it makes me think, if we are changing the calendar for next year, is it too much of an issue to change it twice, or is it not that big of a deal, or?
So, I will say, I mean, we do make an adjustment to that calendar and report that to the state in terms of which days and different things like that. So, it would be an adjustment that we would report up to them. I don't think that's a big lift to do that. It would be two pieces of action for Guy Rispus. He might not be happy that I'm asking him to do it twice. But he's usually a pretty nice guy. I think he'd be all right. So, I think we really and truly could do it either way. It's at the board's discretion in terms of how they would want to do that.
Okay. Then, I guess to ping off of Ms. Morgan, is it possible to, for Thursday, or if we have any questions, to bring up kind of what you might include in some of that surveying? I know I talked to Ms. Lotner about kind of how you did the surveying last time, and how you might modify that next time?
I'm not going to speak for Ms. Lotner's workload between now and Thursday in terms of what that would entail. So, I'll turn that over to you.
Ms. Lotner, you're not doing anything, are you?
Yeah, at all. I am now. No, that won't be difficult at all. We can at least bring kind of the battery of questions and the methodology changes that we want to make. I think there's a way we can get you slightly richer information than we were able to at the turnaround time last year.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Awesome. I really do appreciate this being brought up in this discussion. I heard from a lot of folks as well. So, I'm excited for option D. All right, no more discussion on that one. Let's move on to F or G. I think, Mr. Triplet, do we want to talk about the legislative priorities? I believe you had some.
Sure. A couple of things about legislative priorities. These are the things that when you speak to a legislator, you can say the Knox County School Board as a whole agrees on, right? You can talk to your legislator about whatever you'd like to personally that you feel, even if it's not a legislative priority from the board. But this is what we go into like a meeting and say, all right, the Knox County Schools, this is what we'd like to see done. So, as we go through some of these, I figure we'll just go through the 2024 list and...
Yeah, I figure, because, you know, the past couple of years, I really appreciate what the board has done, and the fact that we use this more of a work, as a working document versus just passing the same thing every single year. So, some things have gotten done, and we have taken them off. Some things, you know, have not gotten done, and we put them on. And so, I do really appreciate the thought that has been put into this document every year. So, I think, you know, if we go through each category, and if people have questions or discussion, do we want to leave it? Do we want to take it off? You know, we can have, have a thoughtful discussion around, around each one. So, to begin, local control, that's been on there for a while. I think has been a priority.
Yeah.
Who's up? She'll?
Yeah, Ms. Mike.
Um, I mean, of course, I really like local control. I, I think that when I've seen Knox County be able to really do things and have the autonomy to do them, that we do so well in that. You know, I think that looking at like third-grade retention, some of the things that we were able to do, and, you know, still work with legislators, still work with what they wanted, and, but still, you know, serve students and accomplish goals without putting more barriers in place. I think we could improve a little bit more on that, but not just that, but so many other things. So, I would love to see some element of local control still there, because I think that that's important.
Yeah.
I would actually like, I think the academic retention decisions is a very specific version of local control. And I feel like the term "local control" to a legislator, that we're not asking them to do anything. You know, we don't want them, like, we passed those third and fourth grade, all those laws. This is something we want them to change and do. For me, the local control seems, that paragraph seems too general. So, I would like to remove that, and maybe local control on academic and retention decisions. I don't know, in my mind, I look at these, and I feel like some of them are a little bit too general, you know, just for them to take into a meeting and go, here's what Knox County Schools wants to change about what we do. It's sort of a general topic. I would prefer them to be more specific, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely understand what you're saying with that. And I agree, because, you know, things can just get lost in the wording. But what I do really like about this local control one is kind of like the last line, that realistically, that kind of encompasses everything that we're asking for and doing. And the, you know, to determine the full impact of LEAs before acting on proposed legislations, regulations, and guidelines, to just really keep that in mind, because I think sometimes, you know, they have a lot of work to do. And I think that sometimes that they forget that, you know, we have a lot of educated professionals that are also doing really hard work. So, if we could figure out some sort of way, you know, it doesn't have to be in a local control, but just to have that line in there in something, I would appreciate that.
Ms. Fonten Ridley?
I've firsthand seen the impact of this third and fourth grade retention law. And I do think it needs to be specific, and it needs to be separate, because when you've got students in the third grade taking a test on the last half-day of school to see if they can go to fourth grade, that is unexcusable. And I think that we need to specifically make a statement about the retention decisions, because they are so, so important. And the teachers are the best people to know, the administrators, the parents are the best people to know whether their child needs to be retained or moved forward. Thanks.
Ms. Templeton? I, I think there's a way to, I agree. The reason my light went on was to be, to create a collaborative kind of communications, to be accessible to our legislators, and not only as a board, but also as the body that has direct communication with the people doing the work and doing the hard work. So, as they make decisions that involve healthcare, that involve education, that involve all of these, these different buckets, they have a resource in us, and making sure that they know that they have a resource in us. And I do think that that becomes a priority on our end to say, we're here to be a on our end to say, we're here to be a resource for you, so that you can pick up the phone and we can have a conversation. And if we don't know the answer, we can find it, right? We could certainly reach out to get answers from the people who voted for them, right? So I, I'm not hung up on having local control being a, the header being local control. But I do think saying somewhere in there, we urge them to seek import, input from local boards. I think that's important terminology.
I will keep moving on through the document. Is this the best way? I'm, I'm just trying to have like a very collaborative conversation on all of these.
Yeah, the challenge is how are you going to turn this into an actual working document by Thursday? I mean, you know, we asked for, Ms. Cote, you asked for options. I don't think anybody sent an email, except for myself. So like, we all really needed these in already written form so we could insert them or not insert them, discuss them, pull them out, and make changes. So, you know, I don't know how we make that. We can go one by one, but it's almost like, I don't know how we convert that to a document in this, this setting.
Yeah, that's what's hard. Ms. Templeton?
I don't have an answer for that.
I know.
But I do, I'm fine leaving it the way it is, too. I just want to make sure that it's in there somewhere.
Yeah, because it's in there. We can delete it. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Question about process.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Reverend Butler?
Question about process. So, for example, I don't have a problem with local control. I do have a problem with the word control, but, but local input, but control works for me, too. But I don't have a problem with not using that. But the process question I have is, is that, and Mr. Triplet, you use the board as a whole. So the board as a whole may not have a consensus or, and so does that mean that that does not go on, on our parties? Or is it the charging rule, or how does that work? And let me just say what my, what I prefer is that we have, as a board, we have a consensus. Because I may feel strongly about local control, and five others may do, too. But if you don't feel, or I don't think the board as a whole felt that way. So I think that that's one of the questions I have, is how do we decide if something goes on or not?
My understanding is we've not always had 100%, you know, unanimous opinion, so.
We, we have voted on individual ones in the past, though.
Right.
Where we just went each one and took a vote on it.
Yeah, instead of as a document as a whole, we have done that, to put things on or off or leave it. Yeah.
So how are we doing it this time?
My, my goal was to, if we get some consensus, we have, you know, five or six of these that everybody agrees on, and if there's some that people don't agree on, it's fine. You know, then we vote on those individually, which is what we've done in the past. I mean, like, I, I don't mind leaving local control. I just don't think it's valuable, a valuable paragraph, just because I don't think it's specific. But if we want to leave it on there, I'm not against leaving it on there. So I say we leave that one and move to the next one, unless somebody's adamant about removing it.
Yeah. So we can vote on each one on Thursday. Ms. Bike?
I just want to say, I must have misread Ms. Cote's email. I thought, when I saw this, that I was looking at it to see, oh, is there anything I want to change? And I really like our 2024 legislative priorities. So that was my mistake and just thinking like, yeah, this one seems fine. And that's why I didn't send anything in, because I liked this one. My mistake.
Well, it was my mistake along with yours because I thought that this was, that's what we were going to do is, this was 2024. Was it anything that we need to take out or put on? And I thought all of these were still, still something that we would want to do.
And they, they, I mean, they could be for sure. I mean, they could stay the same for this year. It's just, you know, how, depending on how we vote on it. But it could like totally just be this document again. Ms. Cote was just getting suggestions if somebody wanted to add something that was important to them or they felt was important to the board. And then I thought we could go through all of these. I think Steve has some that he wants to kind of go over. But that's kind of how we, it's hard in this setting to go over and come up with a document. But they absolutely could look like this again come Thursday.
So trying to be kind, but looking at the 24, I like, I like what we have there. And I'm looking at what Mr. Triplet has given us, funding on special education preschool is new. The, the ability to conduct, conduct lotteries is, is already on there. So the other two, increased charter funding facility and support school choice, those two, those two are new also. So there's three new ones. So I'd see we, we'd have to discuss those. If, if no one has a problem with the ones on 2024 and we want to move those forward, then it'll be discussing those three.
Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
Are we kind of jumping around?
I, I think so.
Okay.
I feel like, you know, it, it seems like people are pretty much on the same page with these, so it's kind of an open conversation.
And I'm still on a learning curve, so I get that there was, I wasn't really confused. I just didn't read this as closely as I should have. On the teacher evaluation, is the use of benchmark assessments as an evaluation component state law? Or is that something we do locally?
Ms. Simmelborn?
Madam Chair, Ms. Fontenot Ridley, as, as I understand that the legislative priorities encourage, encouraging the General Assembly to broaden what can be used as evaluation components. So in addition to what, what we, opening it up to benchmark assessments, other than, I believe Ames Web is allowed now, but opening up to other benchmark assessments.
So at this point, it's not a state law? Is that what you're saying?
At this point, we can only allow options that state law prescribes. Yes.
Okay. Because I, as a physical educator, I didn't have benchmark assessments to do my evaluation. I had to take the school scores. And so I just don't know if benchmark assessments are fair to all teachers, even gen ed teachers who get a student in with, two weeks before the test is taken, and they're counted by how that student does when they have nothing to do with the previous learning of that student. And they could, they could blow the scores through the roof, or they could bottom the scores out. So I think we need to make sure that when we evaluate the teachers, that we are as fair as we can be with how that assessment is done. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Bike?
Thank you. I guess going back to the 2024, you know, I know it was mentioned that, you know, this is something we asked for last year and then moving forward. And I'm looking at it and thinking about, you know, were any of these achieved? So, you know, because I know with like third grade retention, that moved into a fourth grade thing. And then, you know, some things were pulled back. And is something to talk about? And for us to discuss, were any of these achieved in, in these? Is there anyone on the board that feels like some of these were achieved and could roll off? You know, because I do think we try to have a one pager that is digestible. And so if we're looking at, or adding anything to this, you know, I think that there's a conflict there. Or combining any of these, you know, like, I guess I was looking at, when we were going through talking, I was thinking we were talking about individual ones and I would make comments on individual. But if we're going to kind of, you know, talk about all of it, is there a way to combine some of these if we are going to fit other things in, you know? I appreciate that local control is separate from academic retention and decisions, but, retention decisions? But, you know, do we put that in there or is that? I mean, that is kind of a theme of like, you know, the teacher evaluation and, and all of this stuff. Review and correct unnecessary requirements. I mean, that's, that also, you know, there, there's definitely a theme here. Just thinking out loud, if anyone has any ideas on combining some of this or whether we think that some of this was achieved.
I would argue that they're too general to achieve. Like, and that's been kind of my argument in the beginning. But like, the TISA funding, I think is pretty general, but the last line talks about funding for preschool. Well, they are specifically looking at funding. I mean, that's a, that's a big one that they're being, being pushed. So I would like to take the priority I listed there, funding for, I would like to replace that, that one with funding for it. I mean, that is, falls under the category of TISA funding, but it's also a very specific goal that we want to see them achieve, not just in general. You know, fund us for growth is kind of what it says now. But I don't know that it, I don't know that it gives something specific. And I think the review and correct unnecessary requirements would be better suited if we went through and said, all right, here are some unnecessary requirements that we feel like need to be removed. This is a goal. I, I think that some of these are so general that I don't know that we'll be able to have, they'll never be removed because I don't know that they're specific enough.
Yeah.
Ability to conduct lotteries would, can be removed if that, if that passes. I think there's some potential that'll pass this round.
Yeah. I mean, I, I definitely agree with some of what you said. I definitely see that the funding for special education preschools. But the only thing I would argue there is that to do all pre-K, just to fund pre-K, not just special education pre-K. But I don't know if there's some with that. But I definitely think that that could replace the TISA slash funding. And that the review and correct could either, you know, be moved into a, a general statement. Like, you know, a lot of these things have kind of a, a vision statement at the beginning. And that could go with kind of teacher evaluations, review and correct unnecessary requirements, and local control, retention decisions, kind of.
Well, these are good, but somebody's got to rewrite all these to make that happen. That's the problem, you know? So I, I, I don't, I don't know how we, you know, we're supposed to have this done by that meeting. But like I would, what I would say now, like if we had the time, I would say, all right, that's a great idea. Go back and write like an open vision statement that covers all three of those. Or if you want to change something about the teacher evaluation, come back with that and then we can modify. It's hard to write it from here.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure that we will actually accomplish this in this meeting. I know that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I see that and I get that. I think that, you know, in previous years, we've definitely seen where, you know, we've on Thursday or previous to Thursday have shown up with multiple versions and things like that. I wouldn't mind trying to mishmash up something, and if people liked it, you vote for part of it. I don't care, you know?
Right.
Reverend Butler?
Thank you. So I've heard Mr. Triplet said for a second time. And so I'm leaning in the direction that local control and, and review and correct unnecessary requirements may be too general or vague. And so we may want to take them out or be specific in seeing what local control we want to have and what corrections we might want to make. And since we don't have time for that between now and Thursday, we might want to eliminate those. And so I offer that as a suggestion. And then I offer a suggestion on funding for special education preschool students. Then it'd be funding for, funding for all preschool students. I don't know, we want to put especially special education or not, but, but I think that that would be an area. There would be an area that we would, we, we might want to see something about preschool funding in, in place of TISA. And I'd offer those, those two, that, that suggestion as well.
I know TSBA's has that on the preschool funding as a header.
Theirs is special ed, too, right?
Yes.
And I think the reason is we're required to serve them, but we're, we're not given any funds. Traditional preschool, I think there's some grant options we have for that. So that's the reason for just specifically requesting special ed funding.
So funding for special education preschool students could go where TISA funding is. That would be a suggestion. And what I'm trying to do is move this along.
I'm with you. I support you in this.
I would suggest that.
I, I do support that as well.
So if we had that, I think we need to leave academic retention decision there, teacher evaluation there, strengthen and support school personnel. I'm not sure if that was fixed.
It is specific, so I do appreciate that.
And then ability to conduct lotteries, although it's maybe, may pass, it's still is something that's on the agenda. So I think we need to leave that there. So I would not want increased charter facility funding on there. And I would not want supportive school choice across district, in district charter, private on there. So I would disagree with those two. But other things I've suggested I'll support.
Okay. Ms. Cote is trying to take all these notes. So I, I want to give like a little bit, let's, let's rewind a little bit because like Ms. Ms. Bike said in the past, what we've had is multiple suggestions or multiple copies from different board members. And we didn't really this time, except for Mr. Triplet's. So what Ms. Cote is going to do is take these notes, work with either Steve or myself to then come up with a new document, a collaborative document here. And we will then vote on that. And then what we will do is vote on the, like the ones that Steve has brought as individual ones. Does that make sense? Because at the end of the day, we have to have a document to actually vote on. So that's what we're trying to come up with, take all these suggestions.
Madam Chair, I like, I like that idea. But I, I move very much, to be candid. And if there is a five-four vote, I don't think that's the whole. I think it has to be more than a five-four vote. If it's a five-four vote, it's not the whole board. And I know that there are some fundamental differences that we may have with, with anybody. I don't think I agree with everybody 100% of the time. I know that's true because I don't agree with myself 100% of the time. But, so I'm not saying I'm right and anybody else is wrong. I'm just simply saying, if I felt positive about something going forward and we had a five-four vote, I would say it wasn't the whole board. Just because if we're going to say it's Knox County board, it should be Knox County board, at least the majority of the, a, a superior part of the board. So that's, that's just my feeling on it, that if we vote, it has to be more than just a five-four.
Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
Thank you. I have a couple of different ones. And I wanted to make sure that Ms. Cote was able to get the notes. As far as local control, I think that that is an important one. At this point, the state is trying to take control away from us in a lot of different ways. Like with charter schools and vouchers, you know, if we, if we choose to not approve a charter school, it doesn't matter because they'll just take it to the state and the state will take it over. So I think we need to keep as much local control as we can. And as far as it being a general statement, it's kind of like a teacher in a classroom. They're the best equipped and informed to make decisions concerning their classroom. We are the heartbeat of this county, every district, and we need to make sure that we dig in our heels and make sure that the decisions... dig in our heels and make sure that the decisions are not being taken away from us for anything. And then the part on the suggestions that Steve, that, I'm sorry, that Mr. Triplett made about the school choice across the district, I am, and just to be candid, am diametrically opposed to any, any kind of school choice and charter and private schools. So I, I just feel like that's a slippery slope and it's going to cause a lot of dissent among not just board members, but our constituents. Respectfully, thank you.
Ms. Bike?
Thank you. I agree with, with Fontana Ridley on really all that she said and also Reverend Butler. And, you know, when I'm, when I'm looking at what Mr. Triplett has suggested, you know, I do appreciate the special education preschool students funding, the ability to conduct lotteries. I think that that is huge for our schools because certainly we know they need money and more money to pay for things. And I think that that almost goes against the charter facility funding and the support of school choice because the reason why our schools need more funding is that it's constantly being pulled away from them and that's left up to our PTOs and our foundations to fill those gaps of the money that we don't have. And so I think that those are a little regressive. I definitely, like it was something I ran on and representing District Four, I could never vote in favor of these and support these. And I would have a really hard time because I know that, you know, I want to support the will of the board. And if this is the will of the board, that's going to be a huge conflict for me. You know, because I especially see line two in the body of the support school choice across the district, in district charter and private, where it says prioritize equitable access to high quality education. I, you know, Knox County Schools is high quality education. Some people may not feel that way and some people are struggling, but when we talk about being a model district and striving to be a model district, I think we have to continue going for that and not looking for community partners to educate our children in a job that we're supposed to be doing. And so, you know, and I know that we have struggles with socioeconomic status, but we have talked about this in children who, you know, have barriers with a socioeconomic status and their ability to get to a private school, their ability to acclimate to a private school or even a charter school for that matter. Because you have to have parents that sign you up. You have to have parents that are involved. You have to be able to pay the fees. You have to have the uniforms. You have to have the clean clothes. You have to have the no behavioral issues. You have to have, you know, not as many student supports needs as other children. And then you're kind of in this echo chamber. And if you get into that echo chamber, you have to acclimate. And that is really hard to ask an eight, nine, 10-year-old to do, especially on their own. So if they are doing it successfully, it's because they have parents involved or they have adults involved that help them get there. And I think that one of the ways that we have been successful was, I think it's, was it Big Brothers, Big Sisters that's doing the, what, what is that called? Yeah, the mentoring. It was so cool to go to that and see, and I think that that is one way that we are succeeding as a school district in inviting them into our schools to mentor them. Hearing, hearing them and those types of programs, that's, that's the direction that I want to go towards, not necessarily relinquishing it to other places that may not be as successful as we are. Thank you.
Ms. Fontana Ridley?
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Bike. We are, I mean, I'm a product of this school system. I feel like I'm pretty, pretty, did a pretty good job. And like Ms. Bike said, the financial responsibility above the, the voucher, so to speak, would be practically impossible for the target students that they are trying to focus on in the first, the rollout. I've taught students in schools that have struggled and I've also had students who have gotten scholarships to private schools. And I applaud them because they worked their tails off to get there. And I'm concerned that supporting things such as vouchers, and going back to the TSBA conference, I've got the feeling that we were in the vast minority as far as supporting vouchers. I felt like a lot of the other school systems in the state, and it showed through the resolutions that we need to protect our public education, we need to protect our schools, and we need to protect the teachers and the students and everything about it. That's why we were elected for public schools. And to support private schools with our funding is, is in opposition to that, in my opinion. So like Reverend Butler said, the important things that we've had this, this school year so far, that there's been contention on has always gone, has always gone five to four, five to four, five to four. So it automatically, you know, we could, we could talk ourselves blue in the face and talk about these priorities when, if it's going to be the same vote, we're wasting our breath. So I'm, I agree with Reverend Butler. I think we need to have a threshold to actually come to agreement on some of these or all of these. So I don't know if there's any way to do that by Thursday, but we would be remiss if we didn't try. So, thank you.
Mr. Triplett?
Yeah, I won't spend much time arguing. Obviously, I wrote the, the priority, so in my opinion, it's gotten pretty well stated there. So there's no need, need to really argue that much, other than to say, I think that if we think that our, this institution is going to be the answer for every student in Knox County, I think, I think that that's, that's an unfair ask actually of Knox County Schools from a, from a space in a classroom standpoint to a, a need of a student. So I, I do very much feel like it is essential for us to be able to partner with other people to help and assist in some way. I think Emerald, Emerald Academy is one of those places and I'm sure there are others as well. And there are opportunities to help certain students that, that is the better fit for. I, I think that by and large, we are the answer for most of Knox County, but probably not all of Knox County. And I do think these provide some opportunities for those that will find a better fit somewhere else. Not to the lack of our own effort, I think, but just because it's a better fit somewhere else. And I, I think that's the case sometimes. To the, I know the, the pressure to, to have a greater number of, you know, a, a larger percentage of the vote, I don't even know how you would do that. Mr. Dup, there is no, we would just have to pass some policy or I don't even know how that would work. Based on Robert's rules, it's, it's majority rule, right? I mean, is that the way that works?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So, I mean, it's not just Robert's rules, it's state law. State law says that the, the Board of Education speaks through its members and a majority vote wins. So whatever the majority is, that's what can be passed. Now, with that said, I can tell you historically, when it comes to legislative priorities, there have been discussions in the past among board members that, hey, this should be unanimous or this should be, you know, a super majority or what have you. But again, legally, majority rules.
Ms. Christie?
Well, not to sound like a Pollyanna here, but let's face it, this legislative priorities are a political exercise. They always have been. And you know, honestly, I think most of our state people have ran on a platform of either supporting school choice or not, as well as many of these other things. And I seriously doubt anything that we would put in here is going to change their minds if they have ran on that platform. And, I mean, I get everybody's frustrations, but, I mean, just, just the title of the document, it's legislative priorities. I mean, there will be a political divide there. I mean, that, it's unfortunate, that's just, you know, and I, and I, and I respect everybody's feelings on that. I just feel like when we talk around it, ultimately, I mean, we could have this discussion all night, but I don't know that it's going to change the outcome.
Yeah. I agree with that. That's why at the end of the day, we have, you know, we speak by votes and we uphold whatever majority vote that is.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
So I'm not sure if it was the last year or the year before, but when we had such a divide, we just decided we wouldn't put that on there because it wasn't a Knox County Board decision. But I hear loud and clear what the legal process is. And so if that's what the majority feels like they want to do, they do. And I say they because, you know, I'm clearly not part of the majority. But one of the things I would say is this, is that if we're going to call that Knox County's Board of Education legislative priorities, and we're going to say this is what the whole board feels, then we're not telling the truth. So I would, I would just, I would just say that honestly, either way, side I fell on, I would want it to be a Knox County Board. This is what the board as a whole feels like these are the things we can send forward. Those things that we don't feel like we can see sent forward as a whole, you can talk with your legislators individually. And I agree with Ms. Christie is that, that we have, we, we're letting them know what our priorities are as a whole, but it may not make a difference at the end of the day in how they vote. I mean, that's realistic. So, so we've, we've used a lot of time to share and, and I, and I respect, you know, Mr. Triplett and I don't agree on this issue, but I respect him for his, his, his opinion, his, his reasoning. And his reasoning does make sense from his perspective. And so I respect him for that. I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm right and he's wrong. I'm just simply saying we disagree. And so if, if we disagree, we shouldn't say this is our legislative priorities. This is, it's only ours if we all are sending it forward as a body. That's from my perspective. I'm not asking anybody else to agree with me, but that's my perspective.
Thank you, Reverend Butler. Ms. Fontana Ridley?
Thank you. And I'm, and I'm going to be even more brief than Mr. Triplett. And I respect everybody's opinions on things. That's why, that's the only way that we are going to be able to do anything is if we can talk to each other and share ideas. You talk about parents having a, a choice or an opportunity. They've always had a choice in where they send their students. And again, for us as public school funded entity, if we give money to people to go to private school, it's, it's, it's just, it's a parent's choice. True. But we should not be funding that choice. So, and that's just my opinion, of course.
Ms. Templeton?
Yeah, I think that every month, we're going to agree and we're going to disagree on a litany of things. That's how this is just going to go. And it's not always going to be five-four and sometimes it's going to be a jumbled-up five-four. It's not, I don't think that, yeah, after talking to each one of you, just in passing over time, I don't think anybody wants to see a politically divided board. I think this document, more than any other, says the board says this, the entire, it represents us as individuals. And because it is coming from one entity to another entity, and for that reason, I think we do need to agree. We need to agree on each one of these things. And I think, I, I very much agree with Mr. Triplett saying, hey, these need to be specific actionable items, the same way that you, any organization decides whether or not they are effective or not, we have to have, you know, actionable items to go back on to say, last year, was this effective, was it not? What do we need to do to change? So if we're going to speak to our legislators on specific items, I think it's very helpful to have that, have actual items underneath each one. But in the same vein, the items that are under there need to reflect the entire body in this situation. I think it's unique. And quite frankly, it is at the discretion of those who disagree with me fundamentally to say, you know what, you're right. Let's, let's include the ones. I think that's at the discretion of the board of how we're going to handle that. So that is my request, that, that we can include the items in the legislative priorities that everybody supports because it reflects every single one of us. I think everybody knows where I stand on this last item. And I do feel like it is important that what we do send to the legislature reflect us all. And I do think it's important to try and to respect and to respect each other. And to open an honest dialogue with our legislators to say, Mr. Triplett believes this way. Ms. Templeton believes something different? Let's talk about it and be available.
Thank you. Ms. Bike?
Thank you. And I'll make this brief because I know it's getting late. You know, I think being political is just something that we as human beings can't escape. I think being partisan is another thing though, and I think we all know kind of like where party lines are and that that's kind of what can stir up these things. And I think that, you know, if something is not a part of our legislative priorities, it does give us the freedom to still talk to our legislators about that. That was, you know, that's been something that's been brought up about us not having a lobbyist, is that like, well, we can contact our legislators and talk about what our priorities are. But once this goes, goes as, you know, the Knox County Board of Education's legislative priorities, that means we are to take on the will of the board. And that it does look like that that is all of us being in favor of something like that. And I think it's also a shame to think that we would send a piece of paper to our legislator and that they would vote how they wanted to vote anyway without considering it. I think that's a huge breakdown and really unfortunate and probably someone we shouldn't be voting for because they're, they represent us, they work for us, we work for our people. And so I would really love, you know, I've definitely seen it from this board before, and I would love some collaboration and camaraderie. And, you know, even if it isn't unanimous, I'd like to see something close to that, something that we could all feel proud of going into 2025 and our legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I put all my papers away. Sorry, was that the last? Oh. Moving on to G. Mr. Dupler?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, I'll speak to it, but I've already cautioned the board members and I'll caution you again about speaking much about this item. This item is, is, comes under J-195, policy J-195. With student discipline, you all have been provided materials individually reflecting the record in this case. And it involves a student who has already had a disciplinary hearing at the school level, already had one at the district level, and then was appealed to the superintendent, and now it's been appealed to the board. And under J-195, the board has been supplied this record. The board cannot discuss specifics, the specifics. the specific facts of this case, under FERPA and corresponding state law, due to student confidentiality. But in an effort to be as transparent as possible, the Board will have a vote on Thursday as to whether or not to have a hearing. And that vote will simply be whether or not the Board feels that the record is reflective of a situation that the Board wants to adopt, the most recent ruling of the superintendent, or go ahead and have a separate hearing. So, but again, can't talk about the facts. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Depler. All right. Moving on to public forum.
We do have one speaker, Lance McCold. Lance, if you'll state your name and county of residence, and you'll have three minutes. I think that mic's off, see, there you go, we got it on.
Thank you. Lance McCold, Knox County, Adam Chair, members of the Board. I want to talk to you about the, the Emerald Academy Charter School that's up for renewal before you right now. Charter Schools were proposed some years back as, like, this is going to be the greatest thing. They'll be doing so much better than public schools do. They'll bring new innovations and all kinds of stuff. The history hasn't supported that claim. This Tennessee, state of Tennessee has abandoned their efforts with the Achievement School District. Emerald Academy is par for the course. Their, their achievements, their students do no better than the one, than the kids in our schools. I'm sure that it's, it's a good school. There were some people here who liked the school, obviously. But that's not really how you should decide whether you should approve this. It's like, because there are real costs associated with having a charter school in your midst that was planted basically by a private entity for private purposes, that's using taxpayer monies to pursue their private interests. Knox County School Board has virtually no meaningful influence, control over what happens at Emerald Academy. You rubber stamp the annual report that comes along. But Emerald Academy has harms that it brings. It's taking students from different schools, which means that our schools are, aren't as full as they should be. You know, it disrupts our whole system. The transportation system isn't, is efficient. It affects the efficiency of our schools. And, and Charter, and Emerald Academy has not accomplished anything in terms of achievement, you know? The, and they've had 10 years to demonstrate that they can do better than Knox County schools. And the state has every year given them more money per student than Knox County schools gets for its students. So, I mean, it seems pretty clear that it's time to say enough is enough. You had your chance. 10 years is mighty darn generous. There's no need, there's no, I can see no justification unless you fall prey to political correctness, to vote to keep Charter, I mean, Emerald Academy running, because it's, it's not doing anything. It's not doing anything any better than Knox County schools do. So I urge you to vote no when it comes up for renewal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Thank you. We'll move on to Board Forum. Sophia, great job again.
Thank you. I just wanted to wish all the teachers and students a happy new semester. And I wanted to touch on something Dr. Brown said in his presentation. I just wanted to say, it's not only the special ed students that benefit from being in the classroom, it's also us. It's also the normal students. A couple stories I have is, in choir, we have nonverbal students come in, and when we sound good, they make noises. And it's the most rewarding thing ever, because even though they can't speak like us, it's not like they're deaf. They know when we sound good, and we feel good when they make sounds like that. And it's so much fun to be in the hallway and see Karina, she's a girl who has a walker, and we play rock, paper, scissors, shoot, and we race each other, and it's just so much fun to interact like that. I'm proud to say that Halls has voted, Mr. Halls High and Ms. Halls High, the past two years, as special education students. And I would just really like to compliment the culture at Halls High School. Thank you.
Thank you for highlighting that, Sophia. Reverend Butler?
I'd like to echo celebrating coming back to school, for all of those who, this is the first day. I have a grandson who spent yesterday together, and I know he was really, really excited about going to school today. So I just want to say that to all the students. And also, I want to say to Ms. Sophia, awesome job, awesome job.
Ms. Templeton.
Just the welcome back. We are, it's beginning of January in 2025. It's going to be a great year. So I want to thank you all for being here. I know it's your job. But I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and have good conversations, and hear about the really great work that's being done for my children, and so many other children in this district and in this city. So thank you all for the work that you do, and for just doing it day after day, and coming here and reporting back to us. It's appreciated.
Ms. Fauntler Ridley.
Or my snowman earrings, hoping that things would be different. Part of a teacher. I, I'm sorry. I wanted to congratulate all of the, how many teachers received tenure? 200?
240.
Wow. Because that is not an easy accomplishment. I know there are teachers who have worked for 10 years or more to achieve tenure. It was a lot easier when I started teaching, because you basically just had to stick with it for so many years. But it is a hard process. And I applaud their hard work and perseverance, and thank you for everything that you do every day for your students and your schools. So, and also, everybody, welcome back. It's been a long, it's been a long break.
Mr. Triplett.
Just want to ask when we're going to have a snow day? That's all everybody wants to know.
Ms. Bike?
Thank you. I'm trying to not make this too long, but all the Board members have this printout in front of them. I want to highlight Bearden Elementary and their hard work, and the principal, Ms. Harris', hard work in supporting Ms. Melton, the art teachers, support of her students, and all the cool things that they're doing. I'm not going to read this whole thing to you, but just wanted to highlight that the Bearden Elementary students currently have an art display at KMA. It opened on November 1st, and I think it closes at the end of January, January 26th. And they did a whole program of, for Buford Delaney and studying him. And he is an artist that is from Knoxville, that went to Paris, and did all of these great things. And I think it's really great to look at some of the things that have come from Knoxville and our local culture, and what we can do outside of that. And I really applaud these students for their hard work in artwork, because that, you know, is something that my daughter has been able to use to express her emotions when she has anxiety, and all of these different things. And, you know, I know that our general education teachers, our PE teachers, and our art teachers, and our music teachers often don't get highlighted, and don't get the thanks that sometimes they deserve, in being so creative in getting our children to love learning, and pulling in a little bit of history into art, too. So, thank you so much to Ms. Harris and Ms. Melton for your hard work. Thank you.
That's really cool. Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Sophia, thank you for what you said. That was so, that was just so touching. I'm not going to lie, I was fading, but that perked me back up. So, thank you. I think we've done a lot of good stuff tonight. I'm excited about voting to make the calendar change. I think that goes a long way towards, you know, we talk a lot about retaining and recruiting the best, and I think that things like that, making sure that we are protecting Christmas break for our students and our staff, is a big deal towards retaining our great staff. And so I appreciate that. And with the special ed stuff, you know, it's really hard. And if there was an easy button to fix it, I know that Dr. Brown would have fixed it the second he stepped into that position. And the only way through hard stuff is to trudge through it. So, Dr. Brown, thank you for being willing to do that, and do the hard work of it. And thank you to all of our special ed families, and everyone who's, who's in it with us. And welcome back, and maybe we'll see some snow, I don't know.
Mr. Wright?
I just want to echo what everybody said. Thank you, Dr. Brown, for your presentation, your team. Very good. Thank you for all that. Ms. Elkins, also, thank you to you and your, your team for what you did. And then also, the tenured teachers, I look forward to voting on that Thursday night. That's, that's awesome. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Christie?
I don't think there's anything left to say. So I'm good.
That's very good stuff. I want to welcome everybody back. Dr. Rice, like, my son said to me yesterday, do you think the superintendent's going to call school off for snow? I said, I don't think so. He's like, do you think he would speak to me? I'm sure he would. He could have joined the call. But I want to welcome everybody back to school. I don't want to end this meeting on a sad note, but we did have quite a few hard hits in the Hardin Valley area over the break. There were two house fires, two families lost their homes, two fires over the Christmas break. Everybody was safe, so that's what matters. That's what matters. But they were some Hardin Valley families with kiddos. And I'm trying not to get emotional about this one, because I do have a sophomore son, but we did lose a student the other night in a car accident, a sophomore at Hardin Valley Academy. My son didn't know him, and so did that family. My heart breaks for you. And I'm so sorry for your loss. So I welcome everybody back. There were a few people who had some hard times this, this break, and let's just please remember those families in our prayers. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.